Okay, welcome. I want to call to order the October 6, 2025, meeting of the Palo Alto City Council. Madam Clerk, would you kindly call the roll?
Of course. Councilmember Rechtal.
Here.
Councilmember Lithcot-Hames.
Here.
Councilmember Stone.
Here.
Vice Mayor Vinker.
Here.
Councilmember Liu.
Here.
Mayor Lowing. Councilmember Burt.
Here.
For the record, six present.
Thank you, and I'll bring you greetings on behalf of Mayor Lowing, who is out of the country on city business, but unable to join us tonight, so I'm going to steer this ship, so as I said to one of my colleagues, be kind. All right, so with that, let's get going to our first special order of the day, which is a proclamation recognizing Fire Prevention Week. Councilmember Liu, would you kindly read the proclamation?
Yes, thank you. "Whereas the city of Palo Alto is committed to ensuring the safety and security for all those living in, working in, and visiting the community; and whereas lithium-ion battery fires are on the rise and primarily caused by thermal runaway, a chain reaction triggered by damage, overcharging, or manufacturing defects; micro mobility devices like e-bikes, scooters, laptops, and cellphones are frequently involved in these fires; and whereas all household members should develop and practice a home fire safety and escape plan that includes buying, charging, and recycling lithium-ion batteries safely, having two exits from every room in the home with a path to the outside from exits, installing smoke alarms in all required locations, and designating a meeting place outside where everyone in the home will meet upon exiting; and whereas the City of Palo Alto Fire Department First Responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and education; and whereas the City of Palo Alto residents are encouraged to participate in public education measures so that they can take personal steps to increase their safety from fire; and whereas the 2025 Fire Prevention Week theme "Charge Into Safety: Lithium-Ion Batteries in Your Home" effectively serves to educate the public about simple but important steps they can take to reduce the risk of lithium-ion battery fires, keeping themselves and those around them safe." Now therefore, I, George Liu, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim October 5 through 11, 2025, as Fire Prevention Week in the City of Palo Alto, and urge all community members to participate in public safety activities and efforts of the City of Palo Alto Fire and Emergency Services Departments during Fire Prevention Week.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Liu. Chief Blackshire, would you and/or a member of your team care to make any comments?
Absolutely.
Oh, thank you, welcome.
Hello, Council. Gio Blackshire, Fire Chief in Palo Alto. This is not just another excuse to be before you, which is always an honor, but it's to thank you for proclaiming Fire Prevention Week in 2025. This had started back in 1925, proclaimed by President Coolidge in 1925 as a response to the Chicago fires of 1871. It was in October. And this is the longest public health observance in the country. So it took a tragedy to really recognize the importance of fire prevention and the community's role in that. And it's always an honor to see the support from the council in this effort to educate the community. So I would like to hand over the microphone to our Fire Marshal Tammy Jasso to talk about Fire Prevention Week in Palo Alto, what we've done, and what we're doing, will do, and what the community could do to participate in this effort. Thank you.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, councilmembers, Tammy Jasso, Fire Marshal. Thank you for having us. And I just would like to say that we've already started the week. It started on Sunday. We had an open house at Fire Station 6. That was a huge success. Many people came out, and we had information for the public on lithium-ion battery safety, as well as other ways to make your home safer. Here in Palo Alto, as you know, throughout the country, e-bikes, e-mobility devices are steadily on the rise. And with our efforts to make everything more electric, also increased some of the risks of, you know, if you don't take care of those batteries in a safe manner. And so for us, what we're trying to do is get the word out to all of our residents of how they can be safer with their use of e-bikes, and from the way they charge, the types of batteries they buy, and how they recycle them. And so having our open house was one effort. We are also having a fire safety poster contest that's lasting this month for kids K through 5. And you'll often see, if you walk through the hallway, the last year's winners from the poster contest. So later this year, you'll see the new winners. And then we'll also be getting messages out just through social media on what we can do to keep safe when using e-bikes or e-mobility devices or any types of lithium-ion batteries, because as you know, even just our cellphones and our laptops and every, you know, items we use on an everyday basis all have lithium-ion batteries. And so I thank you for supporting us in this effort and for helping to get the word out.
All right, well, Marshal Jasso and Chief Blackshire, thank you for all you do, not just in Fire Prevention Week, but year-round to keep us safe. I want to thank you so much for that. And if you'd care to come up here so we can take a photo, that would be terrific. All right, and so with that, we'll move on to Special Order of the Day number two, which is to review applications and select candidates to interview for the Human Relations Commission, Parks and Recreation Commission, and the Public Art Commission vacancies. So I believe the clerk has a report, after which I have a couple of quick comments. Madam Clerk?
Good evening. Christine Pryor, Assistant City Clerk. I'm joined by Mahelani Ayeun, City Clerk. And today, we will be talking about the fall recruitment for 2025. Included in this recruitment were vacancies in the Human Relations Commission, the Parks and Rec Commission, and the Public Art Commission. Each commission had three full-term vacancies to recruit for. A brief timeline, we opened our recruitment on August 22 and closed it on September 24. We are asking City Council today to select which candidates they would like to interview. The interviews will take place at the special City Council meeting on October 15. And then appointments will tentatively take place at the special meeting on October 22. So this interview process, or this interview, or, excuse me, this recruitment cycle is the first time the City Council will be using the interview selection process they approved in May of this year. Under this process, the number of interviewees varies based on the number of vacancies, as laid out in the bullet points. Council votes on who to interview, getting twice the number of votes as there are openings, and the top vote-getters are interviewed. So according to this process, because there are three vacancies for each commission, the City Council may interview up to eight candidates for each commission, and each council member will get six votes per commission. One in interpretation of the up to eight candidates part of this policy could be that if there is a tie to interview neither candidate, in which case you would just interview seven, but that is definitely up to the City Council's interpretation, if they would like to interpret it that way. The City Clerk's office did solicit votes for each vacancy from the City Council ahead of time, and we will read the results now. Okay, so, Michelle, Michelle... So for the Human Relations Commission, there are, we received 12 applications for three vacancies. Michelle Kraus received votes from Councilmember Burt, Mayor Lowing, Councilmember Lithcot-Hames, Councilmember Rechtal, Councilmember Stone, Vice Mayor Vinker. Raziel Rosenberg received votes from Burt, Liu, Lithcot-Hames, Rechtal, Stone, and Vinker. Sridhar Karnam received votes from Burt, Lowing, Liu, Rechtal, Vinker. Mayor Lucas received votes from Liu, Lithcot-Hames, Stone, Vinker. Sawah Ansari received votes from Burt, Lithcot-Hames, Stone, Vinker. Allison C. Rosen received votes from Lowing, Liu, Rechtal, Stone. Sunny Dykwell received votes from Liu, Stone, and Vinker. Bridget Alge received votes from Burt and Lithcot-Hames. Rodney Leggett received votes from Liu and Lithcot-Hames. And Deborah Goldine, Jessica Nelson, and Joshua Laurie did not receive any votes. Would the council rather us go through each of the commissions first, or would you like to stop and talk about the Human Relations Commission and then go to the next commission?
Why don't you report out all of them, and then we can talk about them one by one?
Okay. So next, for the Parks and Recreation Commission, we received 10 applications for three vacancies. Brenton Hanlon received votes from all seven council members. Roger V. Smith received votes from all seven council members. Nellis L. Freeman Jr. received votes from all seven council members. Vaadeem Axelrod received votes from Lowing, Liu, Lithcot-Hames, Rechtal, Stone, and Vinker. Drew Pearson received votes from Burt, Rechtal, and Vinker. Mark Shonin received votes from Lowing, Liu, and Vinker. Robbie Adle received votes from Burt and Rechtal. Herjane Fongsacheng received votes from Lowing and Stone. Anad Takamala received votes from Stone. And Michelle Ma received a vote from Burt. Our last commission is the Public Art Commission. We received 10 applications for three vacancies. Marilyn Gottlem Roberts received votes from all seven council members. Donnie Foley received votes from Burt, Lowing, Liu, Lithcot-Hames, Stone, and Vinker. Robin Mullery received votes from Burt, Lowing, Liu, Lithcot-Hames, Rechtal, and Vinker. And Jonna Joshi received votes from Lowing, Liu, Lithcot-Hames, Stone, and Vinker. Claude Esrin received votes from Burt, Liu, Lithcot-Hames, Rechtal, and Stone. Simon Tran received votes from Burt, Lowing, Liu, Lithcot-Hames, and Vinker. Edith Barquette received votes from Burt, Rechtal, and Stone. Liz Mann received votes from Rechtal. And Anne Sophia G... And Anne Sophia Gedet and Satali Munoz did not receive votes. And that concludes the votes that we took, that the City Clerk received ahead of time. I will note that for the Human Relations Commission, we do have a tie for the eighth slot. And so we would ask the council if they would prefer, how they prefer to move forward with that tie. One interpretation could be that because it's up to eight, you just don't interview the two candidates who tied, and you would only interview seven for the Human Relations Commission.
I was just adding in the, the council's policy is the top vote-getter. So with that interpretation, we'd like to ask council how they'd like to proceed with the tie vote.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Madam Clerk, for doing this work. I appreciate it. You know, I first want to note that we had a lot of applicants. We had 32 applicants for only three spots on each of three commissions, which I think is an extraordinary, an extraordinarily good reflection on this community. So just, you know, tremendously grateful for the interest in serving the city. I've spoken to staff, and because this selection is agendized, we actually can discuss it a little bit if we'd like. And I just want to point out a couple things after consulting with staff. One, as the clerk mentioned, we said we'd interview up to eight. And every time we try to get specific and clear on this darn process, it seems like something else, that's a bit of a question comes up. And in this instance, we could vote on the tied candidates and, you know, pick one, or we could just stick with the, the top seven because nine is too many. So we can, we can talk about what to do there. One option, I could say a third option is we could take that vote, and none of the above is an option. And you could vote for that, and that would essentially mean, I think, seven is enough. So in other words, the ballot would have the two names and a third option. So that's, that's something we could do. And I also want to note that we used to have a policy that you needed at least two votes to move on. And when we recently redid our policy, we were silent on that, and we didn't expressly say whether that stayed or not. So I would note that on the Public Art Commission, the eighth-place holder got one vote. So this is this council's policy, and we can, you know, interpret it as we see fit. I'd like to, you know, build up these interpretations so that they're more predictable, and we plug as many holes as possible. But there are two procedural things that we need to get clear on tonight. I would note that to do just about anything else this council does, it takes two of us to make a motion and second it. So there's, there's one way of looking at this. But I did want to see if council had any comments they would like to make before we would move to a vote. And just sort of to recap, for the Parks Commission, we're set with our eight interviewees, no matter how we look at it. For the HRC, we have a tie at eighth place with two votes each. And when I'm done, if a council member wants to speak to their support or lack of support for those candidates or others, they can. And for the Public Art Commission, our eighth-place candidate only had one vote, which would not have made the cut under our prior procedure, so council can discuss whether or not we'd like to carry that person forward now. So with that, is there anybody who'd like to make any comments before we proceed to a vote? Councilmember Lou? Were you first? Bert isn't on, but. Yours light was on and his? Oh, yours is an accident. All right. Then it's Councilmember Lithcot Hames, and then I'll go to Councilmember Burt. Oh, did you hit the wrong one?
Yeah.
Oh. Oh, because it's off. We moved seats tonight, folks, and we didn't relabel our buttons. So that was Councilmember Burt who would go first. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. He's, he just punted to me. Got it. I heard you say what you did about the PRC and the PAC. But if we could just get that on the screen, I'm interested in the sort of equity of, on HRC, the two people tied for eighth got two votes. But it sounds like on the PRC, number, did you say number eight only got one vote?
That was for the Art Commission.
Okay, Art Commission number eight only had one vote.
Correct.
And on the PRC, who's at the bottom? How many do we have there?
The ones underlined are the top eight.
Eight. Okay, so the, okay, so only those receiving only one vote are not moving forward on the PRC. And can you flip to the PAC? And potentially that eighth vote isn't. Okay. And yet, on the HRC, if we could go back to that, we've got two people at the bottom tied for eighth, each of whom received two votes. To me, that's a very different landscape for this commission than the other two. I'm not ready to make a motion yet, but I just wanted to point that out for my colleagues.
Councilmember Burt?
Yeah. So just following up on that, on the Public Art Commission, we have a policy that says it's two votes, and we don't, we, if we simply follow that, then we have a solution that seven, didn't you say that it's two votes required?
No. Well, here's what happened. We used to have that policy.
Oh, you used to?
And then when we re, when we renewed the policy recently, we were silent.
Oh, you were silent.
So we could, we could easily say tonight that we intend for that to carry forward or not.
I see. Okay.
And that's what I'd like to hear a comment on.
All right. Well, just to move this along, then, I will make a motion that we, on the Public Art Commission, we interview all folks who have two or more votes, which is seven of them. And on the Parks and Rec Commission, that we take a vote at this time on selecting the eighth candidate to interview, consistent with the policy that the council basically selects up to eight. Policy doesn't say, and we can only vote on it remotely in advance the meeting. We can vote on it right now like we used to do on.
Yeah. Councilmember Burt, just to be clear, did you mean the Human Relations Commission? Because?
Yes. I'm sorry. Human Relations.
Okay. So what you would like to do is go with the, well, the eight are pretty well said on Parks. Take the top seven on Public Art and take a vote on HRC.
Correct.
Is that, okay. Is there any other comment on?
I'll second that.
That, okay. So we have a second on that motion. Is there discussion on that motion? And Madam City Attorney, are we good so far on process? Okay, thank you. Just wanted to be clear. No? Okay, sorry. I'm new at this and forget to look at the buttons. All right. Councilmember Stone?
I don't need to speak. I, I just, I agree with reaffirming, I guess, what was our prior policy on having to reach the threshold of at least one vote. So I support the motion. Sorry. Two votes minimum.
See, this isn't easy.
It is tricky. So I support the motion.
Okay. Any further comment on the motion? All right, let's take a vote.
So at this time, the clerk will proceed to hand out the ballots? We will be doing paper ballots? Or would you like to take the?
I think we should vote on whether we should vote and then hand out the ballot. Because that was a question, is whether or not we would vote on HRC. Okay, I thought that was an old light. It's a new light.
Councilmember Lithcot Hames?
Yes.
Councilmember Rektal?
Yes.
Councilmember Burt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Vinker?
Yes.
Councilmember Lou?
Yes.
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Motion carries 601. Councilmember Lowing absent.
Thank you. And I, I just want to note that I wish I had amended that to say that going forward, we, applicants need two or more votes. I did not. But Councilmember Burt, I know you had a comment to make.
Yeah, I, I think I want this to get over involved, but it sounds like there's a couple of things that we need to shore up on the procedure. And so maybe we can get this back to Policy and Service do that. What I did want to comment on is that the interview process, we're scheduled for, to start at four o'clock next, is it next week? Forget?
It's the 15th, I believe.
Yeah. And, and I appreciate that we were trying to figure out how to fit all this in in our schedule, and there was a poll on availability of council members, and a, a narrow majority of four council members was available to start at four. That's not a violation of a written rule, but it is very much a violation of a norm to start a council meeting that doesn't have an urgency to it with only four of seven council members available. And I think that, you know, we need to reflect on the value of norms. As we see them broken nationally, we've had a couple recently. We had the, the action to not have a action meeting, or it was proposed to us to not have an action meeting on work plans of boards and commissions, and to be able to have discourse with the chairs. And that was done without the consent of the council. And that's been taken off of consent, and we will have an action item. But I really want to encourage that when we have our agenda setting and these decisions, that we really respect norms, and if there's a question, to run it past the council. So I would really encourage a reconsideration of the start time on that next Wednesday, so we can have more of the council members present for all of the interviews. Even though we can watch them, it denies us the opportunity to have discourse with them, and that's often determinative. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have a comment on that, but Councilmember Lithcot Hames, I see you have your light on.
Thank you so much. Yeah, I appreciate that. I think I misunderstood the motion. I just want to clarify that it was my misunderstanding as opposed to the clerk's. I thought, Councilmember Burt, that you proposed in the second element of the motion that we were going to vote on whether those receiving two votes in the HRC would both get interviewed.
No, it was that we would have a vote now on which of the two.
Of those two. Okay, my bad. Thank you.
So, so Councilmember Burt, along that vein, I actually did inquire today with staff to see if we could even move it to start time. And Mayor Lowing isn't in town, so I think that, you know, he should be consulted. But to even 4:30, because I think two more of us could be there, and then we'd have six instead of seven. And so I don't know if staff has any further information as to whether it's feasible from their standpoint.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Kylie Nozay, Assistant City Manager. Ultimately, at the council's pleasure, we can set the time. You do have a full agenda, as you know. We expect interviews to take about four hours, and then you would have a closed session. So that would be starting around 9:00 PM that night.
Right.
So we can consult with the mayor.
Yeah. No, thank you. So if we pushed it back 30, and then we subtract out 10, if we only have seven on one of these, you know, we're 20 minutes later, but I think it might be nice to have closer to the full council there. So we'll, we'll explore that. Okay. So I know we need to vote on these two. I, I actually, I, I actually would like to make a motion that we have a minimum of two votes for any selected candidate going forward. And I'm curious what council thinks about that, because that could have saved a lot of trouble tonight. So second, okay, so I'll make the motion. We have a second. Any discussion? No. Okay, let's take a vote on that. I apologize for not having been smart enough to put that in the first motion. I'm keeping the clerk very busy over there. Thank you. Looks good.
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Councilmember Burt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Vinker?
Yes.
Councilmember Lithcot Hames?
Yes.
Councilmember Lou?
Yes.
Councilmember Rektal?
Yes.
Motion carries 601. Mayor Lowing absent.
Thank you. And so I think what's left to do is to actually take the vote on the Human Relations Commissions, Commissioners?
Assistant City Clerk Pryor will hand out the ballot.
Thank you. I thank the city clerk for hanging in there with us. Madam Clerk, do you want to just put, should we put these up here?
Vice Mayor Vinker, would you like to move to public comment while we tally the votes, and then we can come back to announce the, the vote results in the interest of time?
Sure. Why don't we move to our next agenda item, which is Agenda Changes, Additions, and Deletions. So Assistant City Manager, are there any tonight?
There are no changes this evening.
Okay. Thank you. And with that, we can move on to public comment on matters not on the agenda.
We have seven requests to speak.
Okay, let's go with three minutes.
Our first speaker is Jack S.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Jack Sweeney. I live in Charleston Meadow, kind of near Mr. Rektal. And I've been a resident here for about 40 years. My kids went to school here. I'm grateful for living here. And I think the police department does a fantastic job. Unfortunately, over the last several years, we've kind of been invaded by the vehicle-dwelling community. And occasionally, they park in my, directly in my neighborhood, and, and the police have been really good about responding when I complain about, you know, human waste on the sidewalk or stuff. And they've been pretty good about that. On my daily walk around the neighborhood, I find human waste on the sidewalks and in the median on El Camino Way between, say, James Road and Meadow, near the Goodwill, kind of. There are several vehicle dwellers who live either in little sedans or in large vehicles who park there kind of all the time. I contacted the city regarding, you know, the cleaning up of the waste, and was told by the city manager's office that it, it's a responsibility of the people who own the property or the tenants who are occupying the, either the restaurants or the daycare center. There's another. or the daycare center. There's another big spot for that. And and they just said, it's not our fault. We only clean up California Avenue and University Avenue, which is, I can understand that, big retail, and you don't want to. Anyway, I can understand kind of, but just to say we don't deal with that is, to me, it's not right. Anyway, the I sent a message to the council in June. Actually, Mr. Lou did respond to my my email. I sent some pictures of the vehicle-dwelling situation along Park Boulevard near the old Fry's, you know, site. By the way, the vehicles that I sent pictures of are still in the exact same spots they were in June with the no parking citations on the windshield. They're still there, and I have an issue with taking my grandkids for a walk up that way. Going to Third Thursday is one of our favorite things. But we don't want to walk in El Camino. It's a little crowded. But we don't want to walk by the vehicle dwellers on Park Boulevard. So I guess my message is it'd be great if we could do something about this, particularly the vehicles that are parked directly next to huge signs that say, no parking, large vehicles, and they haven't moved literally in months. I mean, that June is when I sent the message, but the the situation's been going on for many more months. So anyway, that's my message. I apologize if I went over my time. I just think it's.
Your time is now.
Sorry.
As a reminder to public commenters, the time is shown on the screen as well as on the podium. You have three minutes to speak. Our next speaker is Brad A.
Good evening, council members. My name is Brad Anderson Smith, and I am here to talk about the situation on Corporation Way, which is just off of East Bay Shore. We have RVs, campers, trailers, which have effectively taken over the street. These vehicles never move. Some of them have been sitting in the exact same spot for months, if not years. And it doesn't seem to matter how many notices or violations get posted, nothing happens. They just sit there. The city's enforcement appears to stop at the point of putting a piece of paper on the windshield. Meanwhile, the conditions around all of these RVs have deteriorated. There are piles of trash, debris, and personal belongings spilling out into the street and the gutter. It's unsanitary. It's unsafe. It's unfair to the people and businesses that actually operate there. On top of that, there is nowhere to park. Corporation Way is a business corridor. There are dozens of companies whose employees, clients, vendors can't find parking because the entire street has become a de facto RV park. And to make matters worse, some of the people living in these vehicles let their dogs roam unleashed right in the street. I've seen it myself, dogs darting between cars. They leave waste. They don't clean up after themselves, and it's frankly unacceptable. The situation has gone on for far too long. It's not compassionate to allow this. It's neglect, permitting these vehicles to sit indefinitely, creating unsafe and unsanitary conditions. It's an abdication of responsibility. Palo Alto needs to amend local regulations to prohibit RVs and trailers from being parked overnight on our city streets. Corporation Way is not a campground, and it shouldn't be treated like one. We have to act on this. I appreciate your time.
Our next speaker is Nancy E., followed by Mitch M.
Yeah, excuse me, just protocol is that we don't have audible clapping in response or positive or negative in response to public comment. Thank you.
I think you said Nancy Alexson? Yes. My name is Nancy Alexson. I'm a second-generation Palo Altoan, and my family has owned property on Embarcadero Way for over fifty years. I, boy, I could clone what the last speaker said. I have a few bits of color also to add. I have seen raw sewage being poured in the storm drains. We have people hijacking electricity. We have people hijacking water. It, the RVs are not roadworthy. Many of them have not moved for eight months to a year. The police continue to come and cite the RVs, and they walk, literally the dwellers walk by, pull the thing off, and throw it away. I've contacted Palo Alto Police. They said there was nothing they can do because it's expensive to tow. These folks, I don't, being a second-generation Palo Alto, I do not understand how a city like Palo Alto could not come up with a solution to work for everybody. There is enough Palo Alto-owned land to create RV parks that have sanitation, showers, counseling to help get into low-income housing. Every time I bring it up, nothing gets done because no one can do, no one feels empowered enough to do anything. Now, I don't live in Palo Alto in the interest of disclosure. I don't live in Palo Alto now. I live in Los Altos. Thankfully, we don't have this happening on our public grounds in Los Altos yet. Hopefully, it won't. I did also meet with Aguirre Stone in May to discuss this, and I'm happy to meet with anyone on council to give you a little more color, show you some pictures, and try and figure out something that would work. But why, I don't understand why the city is not enforcing your laws, and I do not understand how this could happen in this beautiful city. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mitch M., followed by Meg T.
Evening, council members. My name's Mitch McIlless. I'm a property manager with Wheatley Properties. We manage several commercial properties here in Palo Alto, and I'm here to speak about our concerns around the RV street parking to echo the previous three speakers. Now, we understand that people living in RVs are part of the community, and they may be facing difficult housing challenges, and compassion is important. But the current situation at some of our properties is a safety concern. It's concerning for our tenants, their employees, their visitors. Large RVs are parked along the streets. They're blocking visibility at driveways and intersections. It's making it dangerous for cars pulling out and cyclists passing by. We've had near misses reported, and tenants are increasingly concerned about the risk of an accident. Tenants have mentioned they're considering relocating out of Palo Alto if the city doesn't take stronger action to address this. We'd like the city to increase enforcement of clear parking and visibility standards while continuing to support designated safe parking programs and long-term housing solutions. Thank you for your time consideration. I hope that we can find a proactive and compassionate solution to address this issue.
Our next speaker is Meg T., followed by Dawn N.
Evening. Thank you for listening. I'm I am Meg, and I'm also here to talk about the situation with the RVs. I don't want to repeat everything that everyone has just said, but I share their concerns. I think the big thing is the safety of the residents and the people who work in Palo Alto. They come in every day. They're in and out of the office. The visibility has become none. We can't see when we turn in and out of the street. The RVs are very wide. We don't have two ways to go for cars to pass. It is not right, and it's not safe for all of our employees. And we, the the dogs are, it's very scary. There's a nonprofit bike shop on our street, and people test out bikes, and they can't see anything. It is an unsafe situation for everybody involved, including the residents and the RVs. So I urge you to take action. We are not seeing any enforcement from the city of Palo Alto. We always need to call. No one is coming to check. I know some things get posted, but nothing is followed up on, and it's really concerning. And we want our people to be able to come to work and come in and out throughout the day and not feel concerned they're going to get rear-ended or get a head-on collision with someone else on that street. So it's really, really becoming a problem. In addition to the trash and the sanitary issues and the safety is really, really important. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Dawn N., followed by Michael E.
Hello, thank you. I would echo just about everything everybody said this evening regarding the RVs in Palo Alto. I'm no longer a resident in Palo Alto. However, I was a resident in Palo Alto for years. I do work in Palo Alto and have worked in Palo Alto for the last twenty-one years. The cul-de-sac where our business is is home to about twenty RVs and accompanying vehicles. The animals that the folks that live there have running in the street is a problem. The human waste is a problem. We've had to change operations in our office for our staff that go to and from the local mailbox to go in pairs as opposed to walking by themselves. We've now ended that practice, so somebody has to get into a car and drive to the post office to drop off mail, something that we do daily. Some employees are there in the evening or afraid to walk around at night. And it's overall a concern for everybody in in the company and in the business. Coming in and out of the cul-de-sac, as the lady mentioned a moment ago, is very unsafe. There's often cars double parked around the blind corner. Coming in five or ten miles an hour so you don't hit them is necessary every morning. Just this evening, as I was coming to this meeting, when I left the office, there was a tow truck and a police officer blocking the street. I had to wait for five minutes while they dealt with whatever they were dealing with. I don't know exactly what the problem was, but I couldn't exit the cul-de-sac because of the problems that were being created by the unhoused or the motorhome vehicles. So I would ask that we research some solutions to this problem, up to and including prohibiting overnight parking in Palo Alto. I'm sure those are things that we're discussing and thinking about, but acting sooner than later is critical, and I appreciate your time and attention to it.
Our next speaker is Michael E.
Hello. I've been here last week, so it seems that I took a subscription for the city council to report problems. I sent a very concerning email to the city council, to the mayor and the city manager, as well as the fire department in Palo Alto, as well as in Santa Clara, regarding the problem in Sand Hill Road, Oak Creek Apartment, and Stanford, which is managed by Saris Regis. And the landlord is a Stanford University. So since last week, I didn't receive any response, I mean, from the fire department of Palo Alto or Santa Clara. The only response that I received, it was from the Vid Abatement Department of the Santa Clara County. And they were saying, well, there is no problem with the Vids, Phil, which is obvious. I sent over fifty pictures with different dates from June to September that shows the dry trees touching the balconies on the third floor and the fourth floor. We have a lot of half-dry trees with dried branches, which is a fire hazard, serious fire hazard problem, as well as we have a lot of dried plants on the backyard of the buildings, touching the windows of the apartment. I mean, they're just adjacent, I mean, close to the building. And I was wondering how long, you know, does it take for the fire department of Palo Alto to take an action and send inspector? This is going to take one week, two weeks, one year, two years? I mean, this is a very serious problem. And we are just living next to Melo Park, and there are a lot of trees over there. God forbid, but I mean, if there is any fire comes up, I mean, the whole city, the whole area is going to be on fire, and a lot of life is going to be in danger. I would appreciate, I mean, your consideration for that part. I mean, I hope I'm not going to come back next week, even though you're a nice pupil. But I mean, it's, but thank you very much.
And that concludes public comment on items not on the agenda.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. And I just want to note, since six out of seven of the commenters were regarding the oversized vehicle issue, that council will be hearing that issue on October twenty. So you can, the packet will be published online, and you can look at that and the options and solutions that are in there and come back if you want to say more. All right, thank you. Do we have a vote that you want to report?
Yes, we do. So for the second round of the Human Relations Commission voting, Bridget Alge received votes from Burt Lithgow-Hames, Rectal, and Vinker. And the option, none of the above, received votes from Lou and Stone. So we will move forward with interviewing Bridget Alge as well as the other seven candidates. As noted on Oh, my gosh. On the slide. I can't get to come up. Here we go, this one. So not probably like.
Excellent. Okay, well, thank you very much. And hopefully, we've cleaned up our process just a little more, and we'll keep going and hopefully get cleaner and better and better at it as we go. All right. So with that, we will move on to council member questions, comments, and announcements. Councilmember Burt?
Thank you, and thanks for sharing with the the public speakers about the upcoming meeting on RVs. I wanted to ask the Assistant City Manager if there can be a follow-up to the concern on fire hazard at Oak Creek Apartments, especially given our announcement of this being Fire Prevention Month. And then second, I just wanted to call out the success of the Bike Palo Alto Day yesterday, why they attended, and a lot of really great organizational work to put something like that on by both our city staff and a whole bunch of community volunteers. And and I just want to express my appreciation for every year that they do this. And it's a big affair to have all these volunteers do such a big event. So thanks to everybody who worked on that.
Other colleagues? Councilmember Rectal, you know.
Okay.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I went to three events this weekend, which all showed the quality of life in Palo Alto, one of them being the Moonlight Run Down at the Baylands. That was just a, every year, it's a great fun to see all those people and all the, you know. We want people to do things, but we want them to do it together. And this really was a socialization event, and I really liked that. Bike Palo Alto, also, I went. That was a very nice, a lot of hard work by a lot of people. We appreciate that. And then finally, JMZ, I went today. JMZ was accredited, which is really good news. That helps us get animals, helps us transfer animals, a lot of good things. And the accreditation, people were quite impressed, not only that we had a nice zoo, but we also did this education. We have educational displays. We have education onsite. And we also do outreach where we send people into classrooms around the area and teach science. And that's just, they thought that was such a good touch, and they were so impressed with the sort of jewel of a zoo that we have, so we should be very proud. Well, and I also saw the, our flamingo chick, which is now over three months old, and it's no longer a little fuzzy chick. It's it's big. So now is a good time to go to the zoo. This is a downside. The tickets are available. A lot of times during the busy season, it's hard to get tickets. So if you want to go, this is a good time to go.
Excellent. When you first said flamingo chick, I thought it was like a person, and I couldn't figure that out. Any other colleagues? All right. Well, Councilmember Stone, did you have have anything? Okay. So I just want to add, I have a lot of folks to congratulate, actually. And I'm going to start with my colleague to my left, who got married this weekend to Dr. Natalie Geis. And so congratulations, Councilmember Lou. I'm getting that side eye for embarrassing him, but I'm just delighted. I also want to congratulate Castelaya's eighth head of school, Dr. Betty Noel Pierre. I had the honor of attending her installation on Friday, and I'm eager to see this new chapter for Castelaya School. I also attended two ribbon cuttings last week, Square Pie Guys. I got to help hold the big scissors and welcome them to California Avenue. to be amongst our wonderful eateries there. And then today I got to hold, well, this time they gave all of us little scissors. I got to, to cut the ribbon for the El Camino Real with Caltrans as we celebrate the repaving and safer street that now runs through our city and Mountain View and Los Altos. So a lot of officials there. We had our state senator and assembly member and my colleague Pat Burt and various other, the mayor of Mountain View, the mayor of Los Altos, and so it was quite a, quite a good day. I also want to congratulate the Palo Alto Asian American Connection, which you may have formerly known as Wiz Chinese, because they hosted the city's first moon festival mixer on Sunday at Lucy Stern. And it was just tremendous. There was lantern painting and mahjong training, all kinds of wonderful things going on, very well attended. And then yes, on the Bike Palo Alto, David Cole told me that he expected 400 and had 600 sign up. So councilmembers Burt and Rektal are right about that. Also, being Fire Prevention Week, I want to note that last week, the Air District passed two new wood smoke rules. One relates to spare the air days. We have reduced the number for, of concentration of triggering particulate matter. So the threshold has gone down. I mean, no, no level is safe, but we have reduced it from 35 to 25. And it used to be, we'd have about 15 spare the air days per year. We expect now it'll be 20 to 40. So that will help care for the health of Bay Area residents. But we also, we understand that sometimes you need to burn things. And specifically, if you're trying to avoid wildfires and you have wildlands, you might do a prescribed burn. So we removed burn fees for all entities. It has been free with no permit fees for government entities, but now we've extended that to nonprofits and private landowners to encourage them to appropriately manage their wildlands. And, you know, people don't know this, but just, but wood smoke is like cigarette smoke. It contains carcinogenic substances such as benzene and polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons. It also contains high level of the fine particulate matter I mentioned. An exposure to wood smoke has been linked to serious respiratory illnesses and increased risk of heart attacks. So our modeling shows that 94 to 210 premature deaths per year in the Bay Area are attributable to fine particulate matter from residential wood burning. So just bear that in mind and try to pay attention to the, the spare the air days. Next, I need to report a change or a development from what I reported last week. I reported about several state bills of interest to the city and the Northern California Power Agency, one of which was AB 1273. It passed both houses of the legislature unanimously, and we expected the governor to sign it. The bill included a provision that extends how hydropower is treated for renewable portfolio standard purposes, which would save our utilities 25 to 75 million between 2030 and 2045. But last week, on Friday, we learned the disappointing news that the governor had vetoed AB 1273, which we and, and CPA had lobbied extensively for. You see, the provision we cared about that had to do with the RPS standard was in a bill that also would have prohibited the California Public Utilities Commission from including significant electric rate increases for investor-owned utilities, as opposed to our public-owned utility, on its consent calendar. And Governor Newsom objected to that part of the bill. So he vetoed it, but in his veto letter, he signaled support for clarifying language about hydroelectricity for publicly owned utilities. So we are optimistic that we can still get that hydroelectricity provision in the future, but I did want to let you know that that was vetoed for this year. And finally, since we won't be having public comment at our meeting next week, I'm sorry, not public comment. Well, that too, we won't be having councilmember comment. I want to mention that on Saturday, October 18th, at San Jose State, there will be the Santa Clara County Women's Policy and Leadership Summit. Cindy Chavez used to run that, now Supervisor Betty Young has taken that over. And she asked me to be on the steering committee. And so that's been fun to bring a North County perspective to that event. And I'll be leading a panel on women in non-traditional careers. And it's aimed to help all women, but primarily younger women, explore how to break into male-dominated industries like public safety, science, sports business. And so we have Ruth Silver Taub, who runs the Workers' Rights Clinic at Santa Clara Law School, who is a former machinist, is going to be on the panel. We have a partnership development specialist from the WNBA's Golden State Valkyries. So that'll be fun, we'll have to wear purple. We have a director from BNY Wealth. And last, we have one of Palo Alto's finest, Palo Alto Police Officer Yolanda Franco-Clausen. So it's going to be quite an interesting and diverse panel that we hope will inspire a lot of women. This summit's been going on since 2018, and we have more than 1,200 attendees registered. So that will be a fun thing for any interested. And that concludes my comments, and I think, seeing the lights, that concludes councilmember comments. So with that, let's move on to our study session. Item three, it's San Antonio Road Area Plan. And looks like the team for that is coming up.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Binker and City Council. I'm Jonathan Late, Director for Planning and Development Services. We have a, sitting next to me is Robert Kane, Principal Planner with the, with the Planning and Development Services Department. And Chris, let me just double check, I got my name right here. Yep, Sensenig from Matt Ramey and Associates, the consultant firm working with us on this project. We're going to turn it over to Chris to make the presentation, and of course, we'll happy to answer any questions afterwards. Chris?
Great, thank you. I'm very happy to be here to present this project and, and get your feedback. If you can please move to the next slide. And so this isn't just an overview, we'll be going over key findings, next steps, and then having a discussion on the points mentioned in the, the packet. So the San Antonio Area Plan will be a comprehensive planning and zoning tool for the area defined. It will look at land use developments, development standards, street design, and public realm improvements, and a range of policy topics. Next slide. The goal is to create a more livable community, improve mobility and safety, and support, support sustainability and enhance economic vitality in the area. To do that, the area plan will build on recent planning efforts, including the Housing Element Update, Housing Incentive Program, and the Bicycle and Pedestrian Transportation Plan Update. It will advance the city's goals regarding housing, mobility and smart growth. And initiated in 2025, the project is anticipated to be completed by 2028. Next slide. And here's a map of the project area. It includes approximately 1.8 mile length of San Antonio Road for a total of 275 acres of land around it. 101 cuts through the north end of the site, while the San Antonio Caltrain Station along the southern edge at Alma makes up the other border. Next. So we are in phase one of the planning. We're reviewing existing conditions and beginning to understand the city's vision for the area. Over the past few months, we met with a lot of different stakeholder groups, boards and commissions. We are working closely with the city of Mountain View. We have led walk audits with city departments, the VTA and community members. And we are continuing to meet with property owners. And we have met with the ARB, PTC and other commissions. This project is going to be moving at a very quick pace. We will bring land use and mobility alternatives forward this winter with the goal of selecting a preferred alternative by June. Following the environmental review, the project should be completed by 2028. Next slide. So we've gone through an extensive existing conditions analysis, including reports on these topics. And they were summarized in the summary report. Next slide. And here's an aerial view of the plan area. To orient yourself on this map, we are generally looking northwest into Palo Alto from above 101. In the forefront of the image, on the left of, of 101 is the light industrial area made up of commercial street, industrial avenue and transport streets. Now, these are the names of the streets, not necessarily the future land uses. And we're going to be calling this area the CTI Neighborhood. And it spans into Mountain View to include a gatekeeper project that includes a few hundred units and a few hundred thousand square feet of office space. At the top right of this image, you can see El Camino and Alma Street stretching across the top. And I like this map because it really highlights the largest change areas within the plan. The area has good access to the 101 freeway and El Camino Real. And the San Antonio Caltrain Station is located just on the southern edge. The plan area currently has approximately 800 units. And as you can see here, the orange highlights on this map, it has a large number of housing element sites. There are a number of community-serving amenities nearby, such as schools, parks, retail stores and community centers, such as the Taub Corret and the Comfortly Centers. Next slide. So looking at the land use and built character of the area, the plan area really has a diverse mix of industrial office, service, commercial and residential uses. At present, the plan area has a fragmented land use pattern and lacks a coherent built character. It is not generally perceived, perceived as a distinct neighborhood and functions primarily as a circulation corridor. At the same time, the plan area has a number of community amenities in the vicinity. And it's starting to transform from a commercial industrial area into a mixed-use center. On the right is a map that looks at park access within the plan area. Now, most of the plan area is within a 10-minute walk to a park in the neighboring communities. But the northern portion of the plan area is what we call park deficient. It is outside of a 10-minute walk to the park. And you can kind of see that in the red hatch area. And as more residents are added, spaces for community gathering within the plan area will be needed. Next slide. There have been a number of recent initiatives to stimulate housing production. The 2023 Housing Element has identified 53 opportunity sites in the plan area. And you can see them here highlighted in blue. The GM and the R O L M Zone districts within the plan area are also designated as focus areas that allow housing. The city's Housing Incentive Program, or HIP, applies to a portion of the plan area. And the HIP also allows for high-density residential projects. And there's been recent development interest and opportunity for housing at different income levels. There are several, several residential and mixed-use pipeline projects. And you can see here, most of the parcels between Leghorn and Charleston on the south side of San Antonio Road are development sites, and those are HIP sites. The pipeline projects include the potential for over 750 new housing units in the plan area. And then there's also the Mountain View Gatekeeper Project that I mentioned earlier, which has an additional 450 units in Mountain View. And most of the development proposals has really been in that mid-range or mid-rise construction form, about six to eight stories in height. Next slide. Now, we will also be reviewing the impact of SB 79 on the plan area. That is on the governor's desk now, expected to be signed. And the high-level impacts are on the screen. But there are details and alternative compliance routes that will need to be evaluated. Depending on the strategy of how to respond, the plan area may change to include some of the contiguous areas, but that are within that half-mile distance of the pedestrian entrances to Caltrain. Next slide. So as I mentioned, there are approximately 800 housing units in the plan area currently. And most of those are located on San Ten, San Antonio Road, south of Charleston, east Charleston. The area has very limited retail and service amenities within it, but there are a lot of retail shopping centers in the immediate area. It does have the largest percentage of the city's manufacturing jobs. But that has really been declining over the past decade. The CIT, or Commercial Industrial Street area, has a wide variety of small-scale office, flex and industrial spaces, most employing 50 employees or less. Redevelopment for housing and other uses creates a displacement risk for these types of businesses. But there's a lot of future potential to the area. It really has a strong market for future housing, potential for neighborhood-serving, retail and services. A new retail within the plan area is likely to form best near areas of housing growth with good visibility and access to the major streets. Prime locations include the intersection of San Antonio Road with Middlefield and Charleston. Next slide. The area is really dominated by San Antonio Road, which is a very heavy vehicle route and creates a barrier for pedestrian and bike connectivity. A key part of this project will be looking how to better connect existing and future residents along and across the corridor in a safe and convenient manner. Some of these improvements have already been identified in other city projects and programs, like the improvements to Fabian Way. We will be looking at other improvements in our, our alternatives analysis. Next slide. And here you can see some of the crash data in the study area. It will be a necessity to the future success of this plan to create a safe place for pedestrians and bikes. This includes creating new facilities along San Antonio to better connect to Caltrain and retail amenities at the San Antonio Shopping Center and improving crossings of San Antonio to connect to schools, community facilities and other retail amenities. And looking also how to improve safety along Alma Street. Next slide. Now, a large portion of the plan area and, and the identified housing element sites are located within a FEMA flood zone. The flooding and sea level rise issues is really a macro issue for the city and the region. There will be mitigations needed for new development in these areas, like raising finished floor elevations. But we do not see this as a detriment to future development. Next slide. So this map here identifies potential redevelopment sites in yellow and also identifies the housing element sites in blue. Those circles represent areas we feel have the greatest potential for not only new development, but the potential to add meaningful placemaking investments. The San Antonio Quarter, with its heavy traffic, has very limited potential for placemaking and creating a walkable retail third place. Another challenge to creating a true neighborhood feel is that the key redevelopment areas are disconnected by San Antonio Road. So we see the following opportunities. One, it's really great to see the investment coming after the implementation of the HIP. That bodes well for future development. We know there has been significant property We know there has been significant property aggregation along Charleston Road in both Mountain View and the CIT neighborhood area. This opens up potential for meaningful placemaking. The same applies to the Maxar's property, should that redevelop. And we also see a potential of creating a small neighborhood center at the corner of Middlefield and San Antonio. With the Toyota dealership moving down the street, the three-acre site provides a great opportunity in addition to the other corner parcels to create a nice gateway intersection. And here's a summary of the, or next slide, sorry. And here's a summary of the opportunities and challenges we identified in the existing condition analysis. The area really has great access to jobs and amenities, the freeway and the proximity to Caltrain, Caltrains. It has a diverse mix of uses within and adjacent to the plan area to build on. As I mentioned, there's a lot of development interest. And there are adjacent city-led projects that the plan can connect to. And there are challenges too that the plan will look to solve. While there are a lot of amenities close by, they are hard to access for pedestrians and cyclists. There is not a third place within walking distance that provides neighborhood-serving, retail and services and a place to gather. There are no parks located within a ten-minute walk of the key redevelopment areas. And also, as residential projects are introduced into the existing industrial area, there is the potential for incompatibility between adjacent land uses. Next slide. So over the last few months, we've been introducing the project to a number of commissions and boards. And later this month, we'll be presenting to the community and issuing a survey. It's live now to get their feedback. And then the next phase of the project will be to develop the land use and mobility alternatives. Next. And here's an abbreviated list of some of the feedback we received to date. This feedback will be incorporated into the plan area as well as feedback received at the upcoming community workshop and the survey. I don't have time to go through everything here, but I wanted to point out some of the notable comments. There was a lot of overlap with what we already discussed in the presentation. So from some members at the ARB, they think this is an opportunity and an area to go big and tall and think about adding a lot of housing. The PTC and CAG had a lot of concern about traffic and while understanding that pedestrian and bike facilities are a necessity, they asked, what can we do to address traffic congestion congestion in the plan area? There is general concern about the RV situation in the area. Lots of comments and questions about parking requirements. And probably the number one issue continually brought up was about pedestrian and bike safety along the corridor and across the corridor. Next slide. We would also like to point out that the team is meeting regularly with the city of Mountain View staff to keep each other informed on projects on both sides of the border and coordinate on issues related to the area plan. Coordination with other districts within and adjacent to the plan area will also be important to the plan development. Next slide. And that concludes my presentation. So the feedback we're really looking for is about, you know, one, if there's any other opportunities or challenges within the plan area that were in further consideration. And if you advance, I think three more slides forward. Right here. And then these questions were listed in the packet and, you know, it's about getting feedback and answer any questions that you may have on the existing conditions analysis. And then also any initial feedback concerning the the topics listed here and I won't, I won't go through them, but they're in your packet and then listed here again. And thank you.
Thanks, Chris. And Vice Mayor and Council. So I also want to note that Matt Ramey, Principal, is online as well to answer questions as they come up and we have additional staff and consultants in the audience. In addition to sharing the existing conditions report and getting your initial feedback, we want to make sure that we're heading in the right direction and we don't have any surprises when we develop our plan alternatives. I recall when the North Ventura Coordinated Area Plan came out with different alternatives, there was some concern about some of the growth projections that were articulated in that plan, which resulted some pivoting. So here's an opportunity for us to check in with the council to make sure that we're at least heading in the right direction, even though we don't know the details of yet that we're going to produce. And then I'd also like to note that we have representatives from, I believe, the PTC as well to answer any questions that you may have. Back to you, Vice Mayor.
Great. Well, thank you, Director Late and Mr. Kane and Mr. Senseneg. Appreciate you here sharing the presentation and all the staff and consultants who are available to us tonight. I'd like to move first to public comment. So, Madam Clerk, do we have public comment on this item?
Yes, we do. It looks like we have three requests to speak. Okay. Our first speaker is Herbie.
Vinker and council members, you know, area plans such as this based on our old economy, where the key element is how can people who are part of a land development coalition make a higher return investment by obtaining a property for, has one type of zoning and to get newer zoning with more development rights. But there are both some of the hazards around which seem to be getting worse. And there's also the fact that people's behavior is different in a newer economy. For one thing, in terms of sea level rise, that seems to be getting worse and it's also, you know, in the study, it would go, I believe, all the way to Charleston Road. But there's also liquefaction from earthquakes and there's possibly the latest news that they may be even stronger. And there's also the groundwater level and groundwater intrusion that that usually we don't study, but that's something that that we also have. And in terms of development, you know, someone's going to have to pump out a lot of water from a property. It has to go someplace. And then when they build something underground, they're essentially the walls of that underground structure are essentially a dam so that the part of the water table that used to go under that building that's being developed will increase the level in adjoining buildings. And in terms of designing an area plan based upon, you know, some some mix of commercial and housing in terms of profit, well, for the, you know, so-called affordable housing, it's generally city subsidy, government subsidy from the city or the county or federal government that depending upon to make their profit. And further, you know, people don't shop the way they do. It's not going towards the retail store. A lot of the shopping takes place is over the internet and there are deliveries. And so both in designing a neighborhood and expecting it to look like the way it did decades ago and not taking account of people's habits and that has to be included. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Penny E.
Hello, can you hear me? Yes. Thank you. I'm Penny Elson, speaking as an individual. I sent a email this weekend with a wide range of questions. But I'm going to focus tonight on page eight of the SARAP Existing Conditions Analysis that briefly refers to the twenty-four-foot setback. It says, which it says applies to portions of Charleston Road, Middlefield Road and San Antonio Road. At the October payback meeting, Robert Kane explained that everything from Middlefield to one oh one has a special setback. However, developers, he said, are not required to abide by it under state law. So developers can choose to not follow the special setback in their project application. If the setback is not continuous, then it's probable creation of a continuous two-way bike facility on the south side of San Antonio is not possible. For what I've learned so far, it sounds like there may be sufficient right-of-way for a two-way bike facility on the north side of San Antonio Road, but not on the south side where the new housing will be. This likely will force out-of-direction travel, a known disincentive to bicycling. This is a problem, given that most of the proposed housing is outside the quarter-to-half-mile urban walkable planning area of the train station. Bicycling will be important in this area. So this raises questions I hope you can address with staff tonight. First, why is the setback not legally required now? Why was council and the community not given this important information before this late date? Second, is there a way to legally require developers to abide by the setback requirement? And what would be the legal path to get a twenty-four-foot setback legally required? And finally, in the same payback meeting, we learned that the twenty-four-foot setback applies to portions of Charleston and Middlefield Roads, but it does not specify where those portions are. Can staff please specify where those portions are? Are these setbacks legally required or not? Given where we are in the planning process, I think it's important to understand much more specifically the exact locations of special setbacks and their legal status throughout the planning area. We have to know what is or is not legally required and exactly where, because that will inform transportation concept development and tell us whether or not ideas should even be considered. Please direct staff to answer these questions and provide clarity on these points tonight. It seems like any developer or developers could simply refuse to comply with the setback, creating gaps in a future bike facility, making it useless. This is a problem we absolutely must understand to solve. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Chris B.
Hello, my name is Chris. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Yeah, I wanted to echo the sentiments about the groundwater in the area. I was very disappointed to see absolutely nothing about that in the analysis that was presented to the city council. Where I live here on San Antonio and Middlefield Road, the groundwater is about eight feet down in the winter when there's more water. It's just a river of water under the ground. If they do one two-story residential building in this area, they pull out twenty million gallons of water. And they have to build a dam and they've been building dams over and over in lots of lots of places. The groundwater is absolutely critical to the health of our ecosystem. And if you're going to fill in the groundwater, you might as well be filling in the bay. I mean, why don't we just fill in the whole thing all the way to Fremont? We could build a lot of houses. That's the way I see it anyway. I also really want to echo the idea that we need another park in the area. The only walkable place right now is Coverly. The other places is just too far. It's like a mile to walk to Mitchell Park. And we really need more shade in the area. It's been getting hotter and there's just not enough trees on the road. It used to have an entire canopy of Italian stone pines, but those were damaging the road, so they were removed. But there just hasn't been an adequate amount of trees and plants replaced on the road. But in particular, also, I would say that for these new development sites, they really need to add plants along the side of the road. I was walking on El Camino today and some of the properties have nice plants out in front and it makes it so much nicer. But then you walk out into the urban blight and you're exposed to pollution, bad air, it's hot, burning your skin. And I just really want to see high standards of not just, you know, ecological sustainability in terms of building codes, but we need plants along the side of the road and also surrounding the buildings, because if we don't have that, it creates a dead zone for birds, little animal, little animals that we need that are going.
Chris, we can no longer hear you if you're online.
I don't know if this has been suggested, but there's two left turn lanes and no dedicated right turn lane when you're going south on San Antonio at Middlefield. And I think it would be better if there was one dedicated left and one dedicated right. But thank you for listening to me and I hope you all have a nice day.
Our next speaker is John P.
Hello, this is John Patrol. I live on San Antonio Road, so this is personal to me. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I think, you know, I'm hopeful that the that the planning activity is going to produce fruitful results. I was, I did notice, as Robert Kane listed off all the groups within Palo Alto he spoke to, there were two areas that was disappointing. He didn't seem to have made contact with the canopy folks. And he didn't seem to have made contact with the urban forest folks within Palo Alto. So I hope this is changes as the project moves forward so that there is more recognition of the canopy. Chris spoke to that as well, but if you look at the canopy documents, the plans for the city and the urban forest plans for the city, they would present good guidelines and I think we could try to implement that. I believe the area along San Antonio Road has the least canopy coverage. I think South Palo Alto in general has the least canopy coverage within Palo Alto. And there are actually programs going on at Canopy to try to improve the coverage. So and it's been frustrating in previous developments where the development is proposed and says, well, there's no place to put trees because we need all the land to put a building on. So they pay, they pay a a fee in lieu of planting trees. Well, that that doesn't improve the canopy within Palo Alto. Or at least not in the South Palo Alto area. The other items, you know, to make this project maybe more minimal or friendlier or provide some reward to for people who live in the area. I would suggest adding adding into the plans, bringing in the Palo Alto fiber optic internet service. And the other thing is it would be really nice to have access to the reclaimed water. So let's, you know, let's offer the people in South Palo Alto some benefit from this development plan by by bringing in, you know, giving us a high bandwidth internet service and access to the reclaimed water because, you know, the trees would love that. Thank you.
That concludes public comment on study session item three.
All right. Thank you very much. So let's bring it back to the dais. Colleagues, comments? Councilmember Lithcott-Hames.
Just a technical question. Do you want to take questions first or are we doing it all at once?
I think that given the time, just go for it, whether you have questions or comments. It's fine with me.
Thank you. Well, I want to start with just bushels of praise to Director Late and his team, Mr. Kane, our consultant, Mr. Senseneg. I know so many hands have been on this work. I know from your I know from your telling of it in advance that it was going to be a ton of work. It obviously is. This was an incredibly thorough report and I just want to say bravo, seriously, and please pass that on. I'm sure my colleagues will join me and say that. Um, um, we are at the work of creating a new neighborhood for a few thousand new Palo Altons, which is pretty huge um, and exciting. So technical question, um, uh, the timeline showed an expected completion of the area plan project in 2028. How do you manage, in a technical sense, how do you manage applicants between now and then? People seeking to be a part of this corridor, but we haven't yet figured out exactly what we want.
Yeah, thank you for that question. So um, this is part of the urgency that we're feeling at a, at a staff level and what we've committed to with the council when uh, we've heard clearly that there is this desire to understand what it is that we're trying to plan for in this area. Our timeline is aggressive, certainly by any standard, but certainly for some of the past work that we've done here in Palo Alto, I would say doubly so. Our goal is to have a set of options presented to this body uh, in June next year. And when we have that, um, we'll, we'll begin to work on some of the more details of the plan, how it all comes together. But it's at that point that we would anticipate uh, folks that are interested in redevelopment in this area might be able to um, uh, have a little bit more confidence in understanding what's gonna what our expectations or, or interests are and be able to work accordingly. We already had some conversations with property owners who are aware of our timing and are waiting for us to um, get to that milestone.
Thank you. Um, I think the bulk of my concerns and questions center on um, ensuring that we proceed in an equitable manner, which I know we all care about, but often it's hard to know, you know, where does equity lie in this particular situation? I appreciate the um, calling out that we must not displace people in the area. We've noted it's already a lower-income area of our city, um, home to 11% black uh, folks compared to 2% in the city overall. So that's, you know, a very telling statistic. When it comes to schools, I was, I found it curious that in this part of the city, um, some schoolchildren who are Palo Alto residents will nevertheless be going to Mountain View Wisman or Mountain View Los Altos. And of course, we brag that, that our schools and we've got backup for this are the best in the state and maybe in the nation. And as a matter of equity, I'm concerned that families, particularly, you know, in an area where we have a lot of, of affordable housing going in, would not have access to Palo Alto Unified School District. So my technical question is, um, when was that decided? Are there any other regions of the city where this is, um, where, where a resident, where a child who is a Palo Alton attends some other city's school district? And then third, what, if anything, can we do about it if we think it's problematic?
So we believe it's uh, the, the school district boundaries were, so let me just start by saying we were aware of this before we started the project. We had done some initial uh, work and we understand that there is some boundary line, that the school district for Mountain View does extend into portions of uh, Palo Alto, um, near this, in, in this project boundary for, for some portions. And we believe that is a, a factor of um, the boundaries being drawn before the city had annexed this portion of the uh, community to, to Palo Alto. And it's just existed in that capacity for, you know, since, since then. We, we of course don't set the school district boundaries, um, but we are committed to having conversations both in Palo Alto and um, in Mountain View to see uh, how we can uh, achieve a, a um, alignment or realignment as uh, necessary to serve uh, this new neighborhood.
That's terrific. Thank you so much. I know my time is super short, so I'll, I'll end with this, um, staying in the, in the lane of equity. Um, if we could pull up Mr. Kane's slide eight, I believe it was, uh, it showed the map, that lovely map, and there were little dropdowns that showed grocery. And this, you've, you've got a slide that showed the potential open space deficit on the eastern side of the project. I'm interested in the grocery deficit, um, would be super interested in, as we map grocery across Palo Alto, um, do we feel that this set of residents who are going to be in that sort of southeastern corner of the city have equal access? In an equity sense, uh, they don't have to travel uh, much farther than anyone else does to, you know, do grocery shopping or um, simple retail.
Yeah, thank you. We, we haven't done a map of that, but there are, uh, there is one mark, small little market on San Antonio. And there's, there's actually, there's, I mean, Costco, it's a membership organization, but that's, you know, right outside of the plan area. There's also Safeway, the market at um, Charleston and Middlefield. Um, and then the, the stuff at the San Antonio Center. So there, there's actually um, you know, considerable access uh, nearby.
Except those dollars go to Mountain View. They're gonna, we don't, I'm, I don't think we're interested in having our residents have to spend their retail and grocery dollars in a different city. And so um, that combined with the, the, you know, the notion that we're asking a set of residents to travel a whole lot farther than others to get some basic needs met, both of those issues, sort of different sides of the coin concern me.
Yeah, yeah, we, we can certainly map that. We understand, uh, you know, uh, the city's had a long interest in making sure that there's a lot of um, market and grocery store opportunities throughout the city, uh, even going so far as to regulate that as part of our PCs. Uh, so we'll definitely take a look at that and we can look for uh, opportunities to create incentives for markets. There's a number of factors that a private entity would want to uh, consider before deciding to establish one here. But there isn't one here now because there isn't, you know, as many um, folks, we're, we're hoping to change that with uh, added uh, residents and businesses to the area.
Thank you. I see I'm well over my time, so I'll stop. Councilmember Bert.
Thank you. Um, so first I wanted to follow up on the uh, question that was raised uh, about the uh, bicycle easement on the, on the south side of San Antonio. So Director Late, can you concisely tell me um, what, what latitude we have and what constraints we have? And where we have a current easement uh, with um, and where we don't? And if there are any of the new developments that are coming in that don't have the easement?
Right. So um, I will attempt to concisely answer that. I probably won't capture everything, but let's see if I can uh, get to the gist of it. This is in reference to the public comment that was mentioned. And um, I believe Mr. Kane's comment that was referenced was likely due to the um, builders remedy applications that you know, we've received in the city where the state law has um, preempted the city from uh, imposing its own rules and regulations. Uh, for the builders remedy projects that are located on San Antonio and uh, within this plan area, we do not see that as problematic for um, our initial um, assessment of the right-of-way. And uh, so we don't see that as uh, as an issue. The special setbacks are, um, but it is, it is something that we engage developers with and we have that conversation and uh, have encouraged some uh, project redesign, uh, redesigns um, through that dialogue. Uh, the setbacks are actually shown on the city's uh, publicly available zoning map and it shows where there's a special setback of 24 feet or in some areas it's less than that. And there is, there are some areas where there's, I believe, easements or leases? Maybe not. Um, there, there might be like a couple of properties. I remember we looked at this earlier. The council and uh, Councilmember Bert, I think you in particular had asked um, for our staff to take a look at whether there would be any concerns about future expansions of roadway improvements that we need to be aware of. And I think we uh, transmitted an information report to the city council that uh, concluded, that showed what we concluded um, about where those setbacks were and that uh, unless the city were interested in, in engaging actively in a process to create uh, easements along those properties or um, uh, somehow acquire that property, that was a significant effort in and of itself and one that we didn't feel it was warranted at this point in the process. We do think that there's sufficient right-of-way combined with our special setbacks to achieve uh, our goals of um, most of our goals that we'd want to accomplish, but because we haven't developed the plan yet, we don't know what those are.
Okay, thanks. Um, I, I, I wanted to go to slide 17, which has the list of challenges. Uh, one that was uh, the, in the presentation, it was noted that the uh, asserted that the FEMA flood zone is not a detriment to development. I think it may be more accurate to say that it is a detriment, but it is one that we believe perhaps that we can mitigate adequately, but it's clearly a detriment um, and one we have to contend with.
Yeah, absolutely. Sorry if it was stated the wrong way, but yes, it's, it's a cost for sure, but mitigatable.
And not necessarily limited to a cost. And one of the speakers uh, also mentioned uh, uh, the water table. And as you may be aware, the projections are that sea level rise will push up the freshwater water table. And at a place like this where it's quite shallow, that becomes even more problematic. So I think we want to connect not only the sea level itself, but connected to that, uh, the impact on the water table. I did want to note on the schools, uh, yes, we do have uh, an area of Palo Alto that is in the Los Altos School District. It's off of Monroe area off of El Camino. We also have two areas of other communities that are in the Palo Alto District that are not part of Palo Alto, a portion of Los Altos Hills and Stanford. So even though it's called the Palo Alto District and most of the district is within the city, it's not contiguous with our uh, area, um, our city boundaries. One of the big concerns that many of us have had on the development of the south side of uh, San Antonio is the safety of uh, schoolchildren crossing San Antonio. So retaining them in uh, Mountain View District has that advantage. And I will say that the Mountain View Los Altos High School District is uh, in many uh, uh, ratings, one or two in the state and uh, the elementary district is quite strong as well. So we shouldn't think that we have the only excellent uh, schools in the area. And then, let's see, I'm over, so I'll, I'll uh, uh, wait and do a, a second go-round for some other comments and questions.
Councilmember Lou.
Thank you. And I really echo uh, Councilmember Lithcott-Hames' comments about the appreciation for this work and the detail. And uh, I'm especially grateful that we're able to move quickly on timelines and have something that we can really work with or at least use as a guiding principle uh, around June. I'd like uh, some more context or any more uh, discussions that you can elaborate on, on what might happen northeast of 101, where we're currently developing our Home Key site.
Well, uh, part of that will come out of the community, um, you know, meetings that we have, the, the workshops and hearing from the community. I'll, I'll note that's included in our plan. Uh, this is a huge plan boundary. And it is not our expectation that every, you know, parcel in this area is going to be redeveloped. This boundary is set up the way it is uh, to recognize the transportation connections between uh, Project Home Key and um, transportation networks along San Antonio, but also connecting folks to the San Antonio Caltrain Station, to job centers and housing and so forth. So that's why this boundary is, as uh, follows the corridor and that whole length. We don't have any preset sort of ideas about what would happen. I, I actually wasn't thinking that there would be uh, too much consistent with the city council's um, previous policies about focusing housing on uh, west of the freeway. And so I would consider most of that area to be, remain largely as it is, uh, but thinking about it in the context of transportation. Of course, that's subject to change in the process.
Yes, definitely understand that. I'll squeeze in a comment. I think uh, in terms of if there's any area in this plan where we could build office, uh, it is there where we already have a lot of office. And so I imagine there could be interested uh, uh, property owners or, you know, corporate tenants that might uh, be able to do something, uh, whether it's some kind of retail, whether it's some alternative to just surface parking lots. I think having some kind of in, uh, some kind of movement there. Uh, if there's due diligence we can do just by talking to some landowners or some corporations there, I think it's worth exploring. I agree that it's a, a more isolated area. It is basically surface parking lots and uh, unremarkable office buildings right now, but I think we should do some uh, more investigation there. On that note, have we heard anything notable from other developers or corporations? I know that uh, particularly around the uh, uh, CTI corridor that there's some potential land accumulations, potential uh, analogues to the Mountain View development that's taking right, that's taking place right across the other side. Do I have a picture of what's actually happening there and what the developer is interested in?
Uh, we have a, a we understand the developer is going to submit an application in the next week or two, probably to Mountain View for their, for that gatekeeper uh, project. And uh, we do know that there is um, uh, some property um, accumulation taking place in that area. And we have had conversations with uh, representatives of, of that entity and they're very familiar with the process uh, that we are proceeding on and, and we've been engaged in, in discussions.
Thank you. I think that is another area where I may also rethink like my position on office. To the extent that there could be hundreds of thousands of square foot, square feet of office right on the border, it really is a marginal sort of difference on whether it is uh, a few hundred feet one way or another on the property line or on the city uh, boundary line. And if uh, there's some combination that doesn't necessarily add excessive environmental issues or uh, traffic issues, but actually gets us affordable housing units in Palo Alto, uh, that uh, would be something that I'd be interested in considering. Uh, just because I am at time, some general thoughts. I agree with other commissions and bodies that this is uh, that we really should focus on housing. I actually like the uh, three zones that were drawn out in the presentation. I echo Councilmember Bert's concerns about getting a solid right-of-way uh, along Middlefield, San Antonio, Charleston, um, to actually get pedestrian and uh, cycling and trees and other amenities. Uh, and yeah, those are my comments. Thank you for the work.
Councilmember Stone.
Hey, thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Um, yeah, appreciate all the, all the work. I know this is a, a long time coming and I think we, this is a good starting point. Uh, the report did state that creating new open spaces such as parks as part of the future development of the area plan will be a key focus, uh, but given the city actually owns very little land in the plan and purchasing land for the park is going to be incredibly expensive, do staff have a kind of a realistic path forward on how that's even a possibility?
I'll take a first cut and then ask Chris Twain, who of course has worked on a number of uh, these types of plans uh, in the future or has worked on these plans, period. Uh, looking forward, uh, there are uh, property owners in this area who have, you know, land that should it get redeveloped over time, could be uh, an opportunity for us to consider as opportunities for us to um, in exchange for development potential in some areas, yield some public benefit to the city in other areas. And so particularly for the larger, you know, lands and Chris can speak to, you know, park sizes and so forth that we might want to look at in this area. Uh, those would be some of the ways that we would approach it if the city was not going to be more proactive in trying to acquire property. But Chris, let me turn it over to you to amplify that.
Yeah, John, I think you did a, a pretty good job, but I think we'll be looking at a bunch of different alternatives of ways to get park space and open space. And I think, you know, of some, some questions we have and some alternatives that we'll look at is whether we try to aggregate and try to get one bigger space or a bunch of smaller spaces. And we'll, we'll be looking at everything from, you know, And we'll, we'll be looking at everything from, you know, the potential to purchase to publicly accessible private open spaces. And, you know, of course, you know, there, there is, you know, we know no desire for office space. So there's, you know, community benefit from allowing potential more office space in the area too.
Okay, great. Yeah, I think this is a key need for that area, especially with an increased urbanization in South Palo Alto. More access to parks is going to be really necessary. I'd love for us to see to, to, I guess, look at more dense urban environments for some inspiration. I mean, a lot of big cities have been very creative in kind of creating micro parks or sure there's some sort of urban planning tool for it, but I think there are opportunities that exist that might not require such a large land expansion, especially if we can afford that. I also think all that though means having adequate setbacks and trees both on private and, and public right of ways will be, will be really important to just be able to provide some, some greenery there. Otherwise, I mean, San Antonio is already a concrete jungle, but if we're reimagining it, I think there's a lot of exciting opportunities there to make it really livable. I'll just try to kind of briefly go through then areas that you've requested for, for feedback. I guess I have one clarifying question. I know housing opportunity sites have identified 1,559 potential units in this area. We have 750 housing units in the pipeline. So is that 750 biting into those 1,500 potential units? Is that separate?
I believe it's not a one to one.
Okay.
If some of those units are in there and some are not.
Gotcha. I'm not excited about the, the idea of, of office. But if we're using that to be able to try to get additional affordability or for over parkland, I'm, I'm open to it. But having a strong, maybe area focused office cap that doesn't then kind of roll over into the following year, yeah, I'd, I'd be curious about that. As far as building height goes, context is going to be key. But now, of course, since this whole area is going to be redeveloped, I know that is challenging. I do remember years ago, we had a conversation kind of around that area near 101. And there was talks on the, on the council then, I think that was two councils ago, of really experimenting with maybe going a little higher than we would typically. I'm, I'm curious about that. I can see in that particular kind of pocket there being open to, being open to additional height. I know staff has had some conversations with, with developers. I don't think tonight's the night to kind of go into it all, but generally open to additional height in that area and then more contextualized height along San Antonio. But I do think 85 feet is, is a good stopping point for, for most. I agree on everything that's been discussed tonight about transportation and bike and pedestrian facilities. I think those, those setbacks and making it greener too is just going to make people more comfortable, even if they have to walk long distances to Caltrain, if it's a beautiful walk, I think generally people are willing to do it. And retail, I'm, I'm excited about the potential of aggregation and, and getting some more retail sites. I, I agree, doesn't make sense to have isolated retail along the corridor. So I think other kind of retail strategies we've used in the past, I get might not work for San Antonio. And I'm open to, to us being a little more creative there. And and yeah, that's the feedback I have for, for the requested feedback, if that was sufficient. Okay, great. Seeing heads nods. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rektal.
Okay, yeah, thank you. This, this report was very good. I do appreciate that. First off, office, I really wanted to discourage office. You know, we don't have that much developable land and we really want to make progress on our jobs, housing imbalance at this spot. We just don't want to tread water because if we tread water at this spot, we don't have a lot of other spots to make up for that. And we really do have to make an effort on that. And I think giving up or providing office to get parkland back is probably not a good trade. I think I would rather just insist on housing and pay for the land ourselves. I think overall that's going to be a better value for the community than trying to give office. And especially now offices is not as attractive as it was before. So I suspect we will not get a lot of parkland or other amenities by giving up office, but we still could do a lot of harm to the jobs, housing imbalance. So I would not want that. So, yeah, so for parks, if we do want to buy it, I think we have to start investigating, how would we fund it? Would we have, you know, certificates of participation? Can you do a general obligation bond? Can you borrow it from the state? The state has some lines of credits we can pull. What's the best option for that? And what options would you recommend? I think that we really need a deep dive. And I think we need, if we are going to fund it ourselves and buy land for parks, we need to start thinking about that now. So we need to do this in parallel. We can't wait for the, the area plan to be done. We need to have a good idea that as soon as the area plan is done, if we want parks, this is what we, we advise. Because otherwise, if we extend further, by that time, things start being built and there's not room for parks. So we have to think ahead of time. We have to get ahead of this. And we've been proposing housing down here for four years now, and we are not ahead of the parking. We've done nothing on this. We really need to get ahead of the park planning. And I want to go back to Councilmember Burt's questions about the, the special setback. So apart from builders remedy, is that the only way that they can violate the setback? Or is there other programs that allow them going to the special setback?
Well, I don't know if I can answer the particulars of what has been done already or what is happening. I can, I can kind of speak for the existing condition and where that kind of leads us to go. Due to existing projects, the hotel projects being one of them, but other, other projects along the way, there are a lot of utilities from the curb to the building face on the south side of San Antonio Road. Because of the existing utilities there, the backflow preventers, the, the, the AT&amp;T cables. I'm sure there's PG&E too. It just doesn't, there, it's a huge expense to try to create a new bike or pedestrian facility along the south side. So we, we do think.
So these utilities that are in there, they're in the setback?
Yes.
And that was allowed? Or is that, did we have to permit that or did they have the right to do that?
Yeah, I, I guess I don't understand the, the, where we are in the, in the dialogue. I thought you were asking about the special setbacks and our ability to preserve them.
Yeah.
And I think Chris is going to a place where we've done some work is mapping out utilities and where they are. And, and so maybe just to get back to your question for a moment about the special setbacks. The builders remedy is the, is the one area of paramount concern. I will say that as the council's very much aware, state law changes frequently and it definitely is tilted toward the developer at this point. And we, there are some areas along San Antonio that are special setbacks. And it's possible, I believe, and defer to, you know, conversations with our legal counsel on this, that these are probably areas that are, could be subject to concessions or waivers as a part of a state density bonus project. That said, we, you know, developers often want to work with the city and they want to work in a way that's going to be helpful for their project. They're not just coming in and trying to do something typically to spite the city. And they want to, if they're knowing that we're working on a plan and we have this area that we see as valuable, we'll often get support to, to develop that and maybe that we have to do something else in another part of the development or give some, yield some other concession or waiver. But I'm not concerned that we're not going to be able to figure out a solution for projects. So it's not a high level of concern for city staff in terms of how the 24-foot special setback can be managed throughout this corridor while we're working on this planning initiative. And the only way to really combat that is for the city to take proactive steps to actually get a, an easement or take, spend a considerable amount of time, expense and energy to, to implement that lease right of way for each property that we'd want to do that for along the, the corridor. We just don't see, that's a, that's, you know, if the council wanted us to do that, of course, we would come back with a proposal on how we would do that and the cost and estimate and all that stuff. But I guarantee you it's going to far exceed the time that's going to take us to get to June and, and get the concept plan developed. So I think that's where we are and I understand the anxiety in, you know, or concern.
I agree. That's a good answer. Thank you.
Okay.
The concern is that if you have 90% of it away in the special setback and you have one property that doesn't, that really right, puts a monkey wrench in your plans.
That's right. And, and the, the hotel projects themselves actually don't encroach into the 24-foot setback. There is one area where there's a accessibility ramp that I think encroaches maybe five feet into the special setback. But we also have a condition of approval on that entitlement that says if we ever need this land for, you know, a city purpose, then the applicant at their expense needs to relocate it. And we've already worked out a solution where they can have the ramp in another location. So we've thought about these things for a few years, kind of leading up to this. And we'll, of course, be paying attention to every active project that's pending and ones that might come in the future.
Okay, thank you.
And once again, I add my thanks for the work that has gone into this to date that sets us up to move as quickly as possible forward, which of course is everybody's goal. I want to just follow up on what Councilmember Rektal was asking about, just to make sure I'm clear here. Because I, I think I'm hearing a lot of us really interested in this sort of a bicycle throughway through this special setback. And so it's encouraging that you think that it can be negotiated. And sure, you can't guarantee it, but generally you're optimistic about that. But I wasn't quite clear on how that interplayed, if at all, with the utilities being there on the south side. Cause I, 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 I'm quite interested in the public commenters' thoughts on having a two-way bike lane on the south side. But it sounds like, you know, we're hearing some interest in the north side and I'm trying to reconcile these things.
So I'll, I'll start and then turn it over to Chris to, to respond because they've been taking a closer look at that more recently. I, I think it's important to note, we've done a lot of work at this point and we're on the cusp of wanting to engage the community and understand what's important to them and what they would like to see in, in, you know, what we're thinking about as possible neighborhoods along San Antonio Road. We clearly get and want to deliver on that goal of the plan to make sure that we have safe, convenient transport, multimodal transportation solutions so that people can access this area and not feel like they're, you know, to do it in a convenient and safe way. And so as we're beginning to collect as the existing conditions report and we're collecting this data, we're, we're finding out that, well, gosh, we've got these utilities in the location, these locations here. And, and, you know, we're not proposing any solutions at this point, but we're flagging these as like things to think about. And as we develop alternatives, we'll want to consider ways that are cost effective, you know, a reasonable alternative. And maybe what's our ultimate wish that we want to, if we could, if we could do something the way that we wanted to, what would that look like too? So with that, Chris, I'll turn it over to you to talk about anything that you feel like you can share at the, at the moment.
Yeah, I mean, I would say we're quite optimistic that we can get a really good facility along the length of San Antonio Road. And, you know, I mean, quite candidly, yeah, we do think the north side is actually a really great opportunity. There's already a connected tree canopy. It's very, very pleasant. There are some pinch points. But, you know, overall, I'm super optimistic that we're going to have a great facility connecting people to Caltrain, San Antonio Center and, and also to the other side of 101.
Well, great. So just directionally, I would say, you know, it'd be nice to see those options and articulate strong support for a facility that is contiguous end to end to the extent we can. Just wanted to note what's noted in one of the slides and, and about the development opportunity zones pretty much corresponding with our oversized vehicle sites. So what I'm hopeful is that instead of the oversized vehicles being an impediment to this, that we can work out solutions for those residing in RVs so that for, for them and for us. But this might be an extra impetus for us to find those solutions and have a real, have skin in the game with respect to that. I did want to ask about following up on the sea level rise comments that you made and also Councilmember Burt referenced. Again, just trying to understand how things interrelate. We do have the RSA, what's it, the Regional Shoreline Adaptation Plan, I believe. And the different entities are around the bay are contributing to that. So has that, is that part of what you're going to do or where are you at this point in terms of looking at how that would interplay with this area?
Yeah, I mean, I would say we're, we're very much just at the existing conditions phase. And as I mentioned, there, there are macro and there are, there are micro issues. And of course, some of the more, the macro issues like the, the whole edge is, is something that needs to be addressed. What we, we found in, in general in, in our work is the land here is very valuable. 101, very valuable, that there, there are ways to, to design and mitigate development in these areas so that, you know, we, we do not see this as a retreat area, but a way that, you know, there's a, there is a responsible way to build and we'll be looking into those details.
Great. Because that's just something that, you know, being developed at the same time. And, you know, to the extent, watching that, keeping an eye on that informs us as to, you know, where things are going. Cause since we're also right on the border with Mountain View in, in this region, that would be great. Okay. Well, I will just briefly say, I also, at this point, I'm not excited about adding office there, but I'm, my, my mind is still open. I understand the, the benefits from it, but hoping that that's something we can avoid. I concur with Councilmember Rektal about the open space. If we're looking at acquiring that, we're going to have to start figuring out the fiscal equation sooner than later. So in general, I think you're going the right direction on retail. So I will close my comments with that. And what I would encourage at this point is that council members who have additional comments, you know, try to focus them on the, the requested feedback and perhaps if, if doable, be able to limit those to less than our five minutes. But with that, let's go back to Councilmember Burt.
Yes. So one, I wanted to talk about the reference under challenges for inadequate Caltrain access. So that's getting to the Caltrain station on the west side of the tracks. And I agree with that. I want to make sure staff is aware that three to four years ago, I was able to have VTA do a study on bus service in that San Antonio corridor with the support of the local policymaker group. San Antonio corridor is the only roadway that serves all four communities in the north county of VTA. And so at that time, it was preceding the new train schedule, schedule for electrified service, which gave greater service to the San Antonio station, a minimum of two trains per hour. But there is nevertheless, there's a problem in demand. And, and, but the, the VTA study didn't really look forward looking at two things. What would happen when we have greater service? What will happen when we have thousands of new residents? VTA also doesn't presently have the funding to expand service anywhere. But if the regional tax measure passes, there will be those opportunities. And so coordination with Mountain View and for that matter, Los Altos, to really have a consolidated effort at expanding the bus service in the San Antonio corridor would be critical. At the same time, we looked at the possibility of using the underpass that goes to what is now a Google development, former Mayfield Mall, to be able to have a Caltrain boarding access from the east side of Alma and just the pedestrian signal there. So I just want to put those things out there as important transit aspects to So I just want to put those things out there as important transit aspects to pursue, and I can follow up with you offline. And then. On the. The, just the, this issue that we touched on earlier on school service. And one of the things we struggled with previously when before was brought to our attention that that's not in the PAUSD school district was should we have family housing on the south side? So actually, for me, the opportunity for those students to attend schools without crossing San Antonio opens up the possibility of having family housing there, where if they were in the PAUSD district, I would be hesitant to have family housing there. And, and that applies to, to the parks access and other community center access. Everything where we'd be asking children to cross San Antonio, it's different, at, at least in part, if, if they have that, that school access in, in Mountain View. And. I think those are my main remaining things. I saw that the ARB was really looking at going big on height. But the ARB is not looking at the transportation challenges, which as you've noted, are vehicular transit and, and active transportation challenges that we presently don't have adequate means to address. And the vehicular congestion, which would be magnified, we need to address through better transit and better active transportation, or we're just going to have gridlock on San Antonio. And when we talk about office there, that would clearly compound the problem. And I'm very hesitant to embrace additional office. And I, I also want to encourage you in the discussions with Mountain View to really address the jobs, housing imbalance that we should be collectively trying to address. And it would be compounded by significant office in that area. Mountain View in recent years has gone and increased significantly their jobs, housing imbalance. And they had been focusing just on, well, look at the number of housing units we have as they diminish the affordable housing in their community through a replacement and had job growth far exceeding their housing growth. They are now recognizing that's a problem and beginning to dial back. But I'm concerned about this particular major office proposal on our border. So I do think that on the retail needs, there does need to be some coordination with Mountain View. We can't, we're on the border and this whole notion that we don't want Palo Alto residents to be shopping in Mountain View or vice versa. We need to act like we're, we're in this area, that the borders do not really segregate our communities. Their boundaries of, of jurisdictions, but they're not boundaries of urban planning and how people move. So thank you.
Councilmember Lithgard Haines. Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. I agree with Councilmember Burt's concerns about family housing on the south side. And I guess my fear is, or my delight is, we've already got those projects in the pipeline. A number of them have made it out of the starting gate. And so we are going to have families on that side of San Antonio. And we're going to figure out how to get them safely to Cubberly and to parks and maybe to schools. I don't know, but I think that's clearly got to be an element of this. I agree with the Vice Mayor's comment about this being such a great opportunity to find solutions for the RV dwellers who are in that commercial transit industrial area. And look forward to seeing more on that. What I want to leave staff with is the notion that I, I really honestly believe that this, what you're up to, what we're up to, our San Antonio area plan is a moment to proclaim to all who are listening. You know, we had to do this in terms of finding housing sites for arena allocation, and it was a hassle and it was a ton of work. But you know what? Now we feel we're moving from we have to to we get to do this. This is such an opportunity to show how a modern city, Palo Alto, adapts to the housing challenge, the climate challenge, the sustainability challenge, the loneliness challenge, the other health and wellness issues our community faces. And to say, you know what? Maybe we are creating that fifteen-minute walkable city or neighborhood, right? This is, in my view, an opportunity to say, watch Palo Alto lead the way in terms of showing in this moment, in this context, this is how you get it done. So I don't mean to raise the bar. You're already performing at an incredibly high bar. But just to root for this outcome to be something we will champion and they will write about and they will point to. And they will say, this is how that community with all of its challenges figured it out. I'm here for that. I'm excited. Thank you.
All right. And with that, seeing no more lights, we will conclude our study session, and thank you so much. All right. So now we'll move on to the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on the consent calendar?
Yes, we do. Our first speaker is Herb B.
I'll be speaking on two items, item seven and last item eighty-one. On the construction contract for, for next level, it shows a cost breakdown, but doesn't show how it's calculated. In the past, when the design of an entire system was shown and it was alleged for either the pilot or pilot in phase one, there'll be ten dollar million, ten million dollar savings when calculated by, by the assigning the labor cost and the fiber cost, the, to, to both the fiber and the, and building also electric at the same time. The, the fiber fund had only a million dollars out of ten million dollar savings, which is meaning by combining the, the fiber, you know, with, with the electric, perhaps it's status system control and data acquisition fiber. Essentially, the electrophone was saving nine millions of that ten million dollars. And it wouldn't be if it wasn't for the fiber fund doing something. So essentially that. Here is a similar problem is, but you can't figure it out because it just shows it one cost for the fiber and not its breakdown. Or for the others to be able to calculate to what extent these are accurate numbers for, for the, for the two funds. There's one other thing that, as I discussed before, that anything the city does related to property-related expenses will involve votes of the public to, to approve them. Whether that's being the internet service provider or providing the connections, customer connections. These only tell you about whether electric are customer, it doesn't say the breakdown of fiber or the customer premises equipment. So if it has anything like that, even though you, you've adopted a, a rate schedule that's variable, I don't think that we would be evading that requirement. On the last item, I think it'd be better for the, for the council to be approving the process and, and the brochure contents. Staff had said that they would be talking to council members individually to update what would be in that brochure. And also talks about having a facilitator for the process with the council discussion. But first talking to, you know, each of you independently. And Dan Rich, who was indicated, you know, had done well last time as far as the committee was concerned and may do it again, did the same thing as City Manager Mountain View where the councilmen knew if they met, the council outside of meeting was against law, but they went, met with Dan Rich, he would meet with everybody individually and tell them whether their thing, whether, whether their proposal would work. So, you know, I, I, I believe it's better for the council to do that. And as I said in my, Karen Holman gave you something that, that City Attorney Dan Rich said, which is the role of city manager, I think was in, in the Western City Magazine, but you can find that again.
That concludes public comment for consent calendar items four through nine and eighty-one.
Thank you. Are there any requests to poll or no votes that folks want to register? Okay, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I move that we approve the consent calendar.
Second, thank you. There's no further discussion. Madam Clerk, would you kindly call the roll?
Councilmember Lou.
Yes.
Councilmember Burt.
Yes.
Councilmember Stone.
Yes.
Councilmember Lithgard Haines.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Vinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Rektal.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero one. Mayor Lawing absent.
Thank you. And now for city manager comments, we'll turn to our Assistant City Manager.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Vinker. Good evening, Council. Kylie Nozay, Assistant City Manager. I'm here on behalf of Ed Chicago. We will move through a brief city manager comments. Next slide, please. There we go. Thanks, City Clerk. So first thing, as you heard earlier today during the special, special orders of the day, we are in fire prevention week. So October fifth through eleventh, communities across the nation are recognizing fire prevention week. And as you heard, our theme this year is charge into fire safety with the AMI on batteries in your home. So we do have community updates, offers, and more information can be found in a new story on the city's homepage to engage on reminders like how to, you know, manage batteries in your cell phones, laptops, e-bikes, and those that possess the risks. Next slide, please. As you heard in your city or council member comments, there's a lot going on. So this slide really only provides a snapshot, but this provides some high-level looks at the October festivals and events that are going on in and around town all month long. So as recently or as soon as this weekend, we are having our inaugural Pet Palooza Parade on Calav. This is Saturday, the eleventh at ten AM, and all well-behaved pets and stuffed animals are welcome to join. So hopefully we can see you out there. Code Art, which happens in our downtown community every two years, is coming this October sixteenth through the twenty-fifth. And that's that Interactive Media Art Festival downtown. You'll actually even see an installation here at City Hall as typical on the high-rise. Crime and Safety Information Session is coming up in October at the Lucy Stern Center. Heat Pump Happy Hour, where residents can find more information about heat pump water heaters and the city's SCAP programs, will be October twenty-third. And Teen Tober Resource Fair in collaboration with Alcoa will be held at the Rink and Out of Library on October twenty-sixth. Some of the Halloween specific items you can see in the orange box, the scare fair and costume swap, the Sixth Annual Jacko Jant Funk or Treat EV and Bike, E-Bike Show, as well as the Halloween Frankenbag Workshop. So as you can see, this is just a few of the many items. You can go to paloalto.gov/OctoberEvents for a full listing of everything going on in the community this month. Very festive. Next slide, please. And then we just have our notable tentative upcoming council items. So you discussed earlier the BCC interviews that are scheduled for October fifteenth, October twentieth. We expect to come back on the Cubberly Project as well as, as the Vice Mayor noted, oversized vehicle conversations. That'll be your next meeting, since there is no meeting on October thirteenth. On Wednesday, October twenty-second, another special meeting. We expect to talk about the Lot T as well as best practices managing consultant services. November third, slightly off from our, our fire preparedness week, but we are going to talk about emergency preparedness planning and wildfire audit recommendations. This is the item that all was part of the consent calendar back in June, as well as the council schedule. And then on November tenth, the Downtown Housing Plan, six sixty University Ave, as well as the Quiet Zone Implementation. Some of these may move around as we are watching the Governor's Desk for legislation and signatures on different bills, especially ones that relate to housing. And should something need to be moved up, we will make those adjustments as necessary. Next slide, and that's it.
All right. Thank you, Assistant City Manager Nozay. And so with that, we are at our break. It's eight oh two, so we'll come back eight seventeen to eight twenty-ish.
It's a very long title, so I will just say Adoption of Eight Ordinances Amending Various Sections of the Palo Alto Municipal Code. All right, welcome.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We have a presentation from George White, our building official, to speak to some aspects of the amendments before you. And Tim Scott, Resource Planner with Utilities Program, has some more to share with you. So with that, Mr. White?
Thank you, John. Good evening, Vice Mayor and Honorable Councilmembers. Next slide, please. The state updates the California Building Standards Code every three years to align with the next version of the international and uniform model codes. Local jurisdictions can adopt local amendments to the state model code so long as the amendments are more stringent than the model code and justified by findings due to local geographic, topographical, climatic, or environmental conditions. Next slide, please. Assembly Bill 130 was passed in June to streamline housing development review. As you may recall, this bill's language limited the ability of local jurisdictions to adopt new local amendments that apply to residential units after September 30th for the next six years with only a few exemptions. Next slide, please. Assembly Bill 130 impacted the cycle's code adoption process significantly, creating more work for both staff and consultants than was previously anticipated based on prior triannual code adoption processes. As a result, tonight's recommendation requests additional funding to continue the team's work through the middle of next year, when additional Energy Reach Code Amendments will be considered by council. This slide provides a summary of our phased approach to the local code amendments adoption process. Next slide, please. Staff is only proposing new amendments to five parts of the 13-part California Building Standards Code. Staff recommends adopting the remaining parts of the code with Palo Alto's current amendments. We can return to this slide anytime during tonight's discussion for more clarification on the different parts. Next slide, please. Now I will pass this presentation over to my colleague, Mr. Scott, to take us through the Green Building Standards and Energy Reach Code Amendments. Next slide, please.
Thank you, George. Thank you, councilmembers. We shared this timeline at our Reach Code presentation in September, when we brought forward the new residential amendments. And today I'll run through some of our new non-residential proposals. Next slide, please. In 2024, Palo Alto adopted local source energy compliance margin requirements that went beyond the required benchmarks set by the state for single-family, multifamily, and non-residential new construction. These energy code amendments must be supported by cost-effectiveness studies, and updated studies are not expected to be completed until late 2025 or early 2026. As a result, there'll be a gap in coverage of this source energy compliance margin requirement between January 1st, 2026, and the effective date of the updated requirements. Next slide, please. The first Green Building Code Amendment that we're proposing is an update that would allow LEED certification as an alternative pathway to Cal Green Tier One and Two standards. Our main goal with this proposal is to simplify code compliance for projects interested in pursuing LEED certification, while also aligning more closely with other jurisdictions' requirements. We analyze, oh, sorry. Yeah, thank you. Next slide. We analyze. Yes, this is the right one. We analyze a number of completed Palo Alto projects from recent years to determine a reasonably comparable LEED certification level based on what those projects would have achieved. And we landed on lead silver for tier one projects and lead gold for tier two projects. We also felt that was important to maintain a few of the tier one and tier two prerequisite requirements, which we'll discuss a bit more on the next slide. There'll be some trade-offs between the requirement for lead and Cal Green tier prerequisites, but both will promote sustainable building construction. The Cal Green prerequisites on construction waste and EV charging will still be required for projects opting for the lead certification pathways to ensure continued progress towards key city sustainability objectives. Next slide. The state codes embodied carbon requirements, 100,000 square foot threshold warranted no enforcement in Palo Alto unless code cycle. And even the new state code threshold of 50,000 square feet would likely have very limited impact on Palo Alto projects. Staff is proposing lowering the threshold for embodied carbon compliance to 25,000 square feet and above. Next slide, please. Palo Alto's existing local code requirements and parking lot size categories do not align with the format of the state mandatory code requirements, which can lead to complications with code design and compliance. Our proposal is to use this as an opportunity to not only expand our EV readiness requirements with increased infrastructure quotas, but to also align with the state code formatting by adopting the state's voluntary Cal Green Tier 2 EV readiness requirement as a mandatory local code amendment. Next slide. And I'll pass it back to George. Thank you. Next slide.
Thank you. Thank you, Tim. In addition to the amendments Mr. Scott just covered, I will briefly cover the proposed new amendments to the building plumbing and fire codes. Next slide, please. The building code new amendments identified triggers for automatic sprinkler systems and require more intensive fire sprinkler design for different types of new and existing non-residential buildings. This will bring alignment with the upcoming fire code amendments in November. The plumbing code new amendments align grease interceptor code requirements with the newly created Palo Alto Municipal Code Chapter 1613 that council recently adopted. Next slide, please. The upcoming fire code amendments and the adoption of Part 7, the Wildland Urban Interface Code, is scheduled to be considered on consent in November. Possible amendments to this fire code may include one or more of the requirements listed here on this slide. Our Fire Marshal, Cameron Jasso, is available remotely this evening to answer any questions regarding these amendments. Next slide. At this point, staff recommends that city council adopt the ordinances in attachments A through H. Direct staff to return to council on the consent calendar to adopt Wildlands Urban Interface and fire codes with amendments and approve an appropriation of $96,000 from the Budget Stabilization Reserve to Planning and Development Services to pay for the additional reach code development efforts in the spring of next year. This can, next slide, please. They'll go back one. Thank you. This slide, this concludes tonight's presentation. Mr. Scott and I and our colleagues are available to answer any questions. I now return this item to you, Vice Mayor.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. White and Mr. Scott for the presentation. I want to see if my colleagues have any clarifying questions that would be helpful to have answered before we go to public comment, and then we'll bring it back to the DA's after that. Do you have any preliminary questions folks are eager to ask? Seeing no immediate questions, Madam Clerk, do we have public comment on this item?
For the record, there are no requests to speak and no hands are raised on Zoom.
Oh, okay. Maybe we'll get back on time. All right, council colleagues. Who would like to comment or ask questions on this? Or make a motion? Councilmember Ractall.
First of all, thank you for getting the reach codes done before the deadline. That was really important. So we weren't as efficient as we could have been just because of the time constraint, but now we're asking for more money. And what's the pros and cons of spending that money now or just putting this, the work on the shelf and doing it next year?
The additional funds are to complete our code adoption process, especially for the energy reach code as it relates to the one margin code that we currently have in existence. When we adopt this energy code tonight, we will be effectively reverting back to the state code on January 1st, 2026, because our local amendments will expire on December 31st, 2026. And the reason why we couldn't bring those amendments forward to you tonight is because the related statewide cost effectiveness studies have not been concluded yet and are not available for us.
Okay, so we are time constrained still?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have questions or comments? Councilmember Burt?
I don't have other questions. I think this is really clear and both complex and straightforward. So I would move the staff recommendations, one through three. And that's it.
I have a second.
Second.
Excellent.
I don't need to speak further to it.
Wow. Okay, I just have to say it, but Mayor Lowing may need to take another trip. No, I would just add that I'm really thankful that you did this. I know triannually we do this and it shouldn't be a big deal, but you had to carve out and deal with timeframes and these new laws. And so I'm just really grateful to staff for doing that. And I agree, it's complex and straightforward at the same time. So there's no further comment? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
It would be my pleasure.
We want more of George's cake.
Councilmember Ractall?
Yes.
Councilmember Lou?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Vinker?
Yes.
Councilmember Burt?
Yes.
Councilmember Lethgard Haynes?
Yes.
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Motion carries 601. Mayor Lowing absent.
Excellent. That's a real testament to staff that we went through it like that. So thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Let's move to our final item 11. Review of state and local ballot measures appearing on the November 4th, 2025 ballot. In consideration of possible city council positions, I think those ballots dropped into the mail today, so welcome when you get a chance to sit down, Deputy City Manager. Oh, excellent. I don't have to welcome you because you've been working hard all night.
Good evening, Council. Christine Pryor, Assistant City Clerk, and I'm joined by Chantal Cotton-Gangs, Deputy City Manager. And as noted, we'll be talking today about the 2025 ballot measures and possible positions the city council might take. So just some brief background on this item. The city council has had similar items for the past few elections. It serves two main purposes. The first is to provide information for Palo Alto voters to consider when casting their ballots. And the second is to provide an opportunity for city councils to discuss the ballot measures and consider any positions they may want to take on behalf of the city. A couple of things to note about the item in the staff report. The staff report notes when the ballot measures align with the city council approved legislative guidelines. You'll recall that the city council approves these guidelines every year in January. The city council is free to take or not take positions regardless of alignment with the legislative guidelines. We are offering, we're noting those alignments just just for the information of the council. So there is a statewide special election on November 4th, 2025. There will be two ballot measures before Palo Alto voters. The first is Proposition 50, which is a statewide proposition. The second is Santa Clara County Measure A, which is a local ballot measure. And then below are some key dates. As Vice Mayor Vinker noted, the mail-in ballots did get, did start getting mailed out today. The last day for voters to register to vote for this election is October 20th. And November 4th is Election Day. And we do encourage residents to look up vote center locations, ballot drop boxes, voter information guides, and more at the county registrar or voters website. So Proposition 50 is a statewide proposition that was put on the ballot by the state legislature. Below is the ballot language. I won't read out the whole language, but it authorizes new, the use of new congressional district maps through 2030. And noting that there are no relevant Palo Alto legislative guidelines relating to redistricting. The second measure is Measure A. This is a ballot measure for Santa Clara County put on the ballot by the county board of supervisors. Again, the full ballot language is included on the slides. It would adopt a 5.8 cent general sales tax for five years. And there are no relevant Palo Alto legislative guidelines relating to the administration of healthcare services. Just recommendation, we recommend that the council review the ballot measures that will be on the November 4th, 2025 election and consider adoption of positions if desired by the council. And that concludes the presentation, and we are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Well, thank you, Assistant City Clerk Pryor. Let's go to public comment first. Do we have any tonight?
Yes, Vice Mayor, we have one request to speak. Our first speaker is Raymond G.
Welcome.
Well, thank you. My name is Raymond Goans. I am a community health worker whose patients are the most marginalized in Santa Clara County and whose patients will be directly impacted by these cuts in ways that will have rippling effects throughout this county. I'm also a community health worker who lives in within an opportunity center. And I know that the direct cuts, how they will impact my neighbors for those people that are not fortunate like me to have opportunity to have a flame here. I see every day the help that the county provides my neighbors that they really do need for mental health services, to medical services, to food, housing. And all that will be impacted by these cuts. I'm here to speak for the residents of the Opportunity Center that can't speak for themselves, that know, that don't know that they only have, that they have power within her voice. These cuts will directly impact them. And I don't know what some of them, or how some of them will be able to survive without the assistance that the county provides. I have to county, as I once did, to support Measure A. And at the city, I expect you to support it in your individual capacity that you support it. Because a lot of my neighbors, they will need a support. I don't have much to say about that. So thank you. I appreciate it.
Our next speaker is Jennifer B.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. I was also just calling in to speak in support of Measure A. I think that Raymond said it really beautifully about the people that are going to be impacted by this, that use county services. But I just also wanted to add on in case any council members or community members aren't compelled by that argument because they don't use public services, public health services. I just want to point out how the county has pointed out just how impacted the entire community will be. And even if you don't use the county hospitals, if any of them close or services are cut back, which are sure to be with such a big hit, all of us will see longer wait times, more impacted doctors' offices and visits. So I ask you all to please support this really important measure, which of course won't even undo all the damage that's being done. But at least we'll blunt it a little bit and hopefully allow us to all still access the care that we also desperately need. Thank you.
That concludes public comment on action item 11.
Thank you. And of course, we, in our consideration of Measure A, have the benefit of our study session from last week when the county came in person to help answer our questions and explain the situation. So that's a tremendous background for this item. So with that, back to my colleagues, starting with Councilmember Stone.
Great. Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. I think we should endorse both positions, starting with Measure A. I'm just tired of so-called pro-life politicians in Washington who'd rather restrict women's reproductive rights than provide affordable healthcare to all Americans. Their decisions codified in the one big beautiful bill will cost thousands of people in Santa Clara County to lose their health insurance, potentially force the closure of hospitals and other clinics, and put countless lives at risk throughout the county and here in Palo Alto. These are not pro-life values. They are a dangerous assault on all our lives and well-being. And while I don't want to approve another tax hike at a time where the cost of living continues to outpace wages and just the regressive nature of a sales tax will disproportionately impact low-income shoppers, the fact is that these cuts by the federal government, while going to impact us all, will have a greater disproportionate impact on low-income people beyond this truly minor sales tax increase. The impact on how much an individual should expect to pay on a purchase will be minor, but the much-needed revenue that this measure will raise for the county to be able to offset the worst of these cuts will in fact save lives. And here in Palo Alto, we rely on the county to provide critical services from, from helping the unhoused to those struggling with mental health issues and so many in between. We rely on these services and we should be doing our part to be able to help keep those services funded. And supporting Measure A is, I think, one small step to do that. And then on Proposition 50, this Congress and President have really created irreparable harm to our state and city through budget cuts. That's causing our county to see billion-dollar deficits, unconstitutional and immoral conditions of AIDS, of aid on grants our city relies on to frankly racist immigration policies targeting our communities of color. National politics has gone so far beyond politics that it really is a fight to save democracy. And the attempts by the Texas legislator and others around the country is just another attempt to circumvent our democratic norms and make desperate power grabs. I think in order to have any chance at restoring sanity to the federal government in 2026, Prop 50 needs to pass. We should do what we can to support it. And in particular, I take comfort in knowing that our own congressional district is not going to change. We will not lose the very capable representation that we now have in Congressman Licardo. So I think especially for our community and our congressional district and the need to fight back and bring, and bring this fight to this administration that's trying to do everything they can to undermine our democracy. I think supporting Proposition 50 is also the way to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have a comment? Councilmember Lethgard Haynes?
Well, I just want to second what Councilmember Stone said said and said so well. I want to add that I think there are some who feel California shouldn't do this. We have an independent commission that does our districting. We're going back on our intentions. And this really is a different lane. This is a state called Texas deciding to seize power to try to redraw lines, to create more power for one party in Congress. And California is the only state that has the capacity to do it back. And so this is trying to maintain a status quo. You know, today we saw the news that Governor Abbott in Texas is all but bragging that the Texas what's it called? National Guard. The Texas National Guard is going to kind of deploy itself or with the authorization of the federal government to go do things in other states. The Texas governor has said you can either fully enforce protection for federal employees or get out of the way and let Texas Guard do it. or get out of the way and let Texas Guard do it. And so, this is truly unprecedented in our lifetimes as Americans. And I appreciate that our leadership at the state level is figuring out how we can fight back, not for California, but for democracy.
Councilmember Burt?
Well, I support both of these measures. I think while we're tempted to use this occasion to articulate our very serious political concerns on a wide range of ramifications to our community and our state and our nation, I think our actions tonight, we should attempt to really focus on how support for these measures serves our community. And in each case, I think that's so. And the broader one of the Prop 50, I was someone who supported the independent redistricting measure in 2008 because it was really oriented toward fairer democracy for all. Unfortunately, we're in a situation where we're not seeing that play out reciprocally. And the state is then put in a position of not being able to justify being an outlier when other states are not acting at all comparably. So, I also want to note that it was deliberately crafted to only temporarily use these maps through 2030 under the hope that we're going to be able to return to a fair approach where California has been the model of independent redistricting. On Measure A, these are critical services, as we discussed when we had the county representatives here. They're critical services that the county provides that we tend to have taken for granted because they were never in jeopardy. And one of the things I realize is that the staff notation that we don't have a reference in our legislative guidelines related to administration of healthcare services, I think we should refer that consideration when we review the guidelines, not only healthcare services, but that and other critical county-provided services. And we can look at what those may be, but those services directly impact our residents. And so, threats to them are matters of real concern to us and our legislative positions. Thank you.
Councilmember Lou?
I certainly believe that we should support Measure A. It's clearly the right thing to do for our residents and our neighbors. It's the only viable option at the speed and scale that we need, but it's also not enough. It's only a third. And so, I think that really speaks to the county needing to make tough decisions and also needing to make all the reforms or operational efficiencies or tackle or external funding sources or anything that they can pull together. So, Measure A, to me, just strictly benefits the community and is very, very responsibly written and well-crafted. Proposition 50 is harder for me. Of course, it doesn't directly change the maps in Palo Alto. It's obviously flawed in the long-term direction of where we want our country and where we want our democracy to go. It's also an armors race that we can't win if we really double down over, beyond 2030. But I think as Councilmember Burt noted, the proposition is carefully written to try to scope it and provide de-escalation paths. I think without that, I would frankly oppose it. But this is really one of the only ways to try to keep the conversation going and prevent potentially an even bigger escalation. Or, okay, the arms race metaphors are complicated and actually don't really serve either side that well. But I agree with other council members that spoke on moving forward with Prop 50 as well.
Councilmember Rektal?
Yeah, I don't like the idea of imposing a new tax, but when you consider the impact of the Medicaid cuts, it's the lesser of two evils. So, I do support Measure A, and I think we should support Measure A. Prop 50, I kind of, in some ways, find repulsive. We're gerrymandering. But if you look at what happens if Prop 50 doesn't pass, we'll probably get more Medicaid-type cuts and more impacts to the community. And so, even though this is a national issue, I really think that we do have local impacts that we have to protect ourselves against. So, I reluctantly also think we should support Prop 50.
Thank you. So, I'm going to start with Prop 50. I am a big fan of independent redistricting. In fact, I applied to be a member of the Redistricting Commission in 2009. And I made it a couple of rounds, but then there were people far more amazingly well-qualified than I, not amazing that they were more than I, but they were amazingly well-qualified, who got on that commission and spent a lot of time with the data, drawing lines in the first go-round. So, I am troubled by changing the maps that our recent independent commission drew. However, I'm more troubled by other states changing maps clearly for political purposes without any mitigating response. And on the other hand, I'm impressed with the maps that were drawn for the new California proposed districts because they are at least as compliant, if not more so, with the Voting Rights Act and its provisions around representation. Whereas the congressional maps in Texas appear non-compliant with the Voting Rights Act now and only get worse with the recent changes, the ones here are actually, by some measures, improved. So, I had the opportunity to speak with Congresswoman Lafferty recently, and she led a lot of the work that was done in bringing this proposition forward and drawing these maps. And she described the long, long hours that were put in by experts to draw compliant maps. So, that to me is we are still coloring within the lines. And as was noted, this is a short-term thing that will go back to independent later. And honestly, reducing the relative voice in Congress for California that would happen if we did not respond is made all the more egregious when you consider, as is often pointed out, that California is a donor state sending far more dollars to the federal government than those we get back every year, but even more so this year. So, I strongly support Proposition 50 and hope that we can, and it looks like we'll likely pass it unanimously tonight. For Measure A, in answer to my question last week to the county executive about what would happen to other hospitals outside the county system, they explained the scenario that was described by our public commenter, that they will be affected themselves by the federal cuts, and that will be compounded by the risk of rural and county hospitals closing. And that will affect in an immediate and personal way each and every one of us due to the decreased availability of care. But to me, the measure of a community is how it treats its most vulnerable members, and this measure protects our most vulnerable in one of the most universal and personal of ways, looking out for their health. So, I am sad that it is necessary to step up in this way, but I wholeheartedly support it. And having heard nothing but support from my colleagues, I am going to move that this council issue a position of support for both Measure A and Proposition 50. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Vinker?
Yes.
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Councilmember Rektal?
Yes.
Councilmember Lou?
Yes.
Councilmember Burt?
Yes.
Councilmember Lithgow Hames?
Yes.
Motion carries, six zero one. Mayor Lowing absent.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And I would like to note that at 8:58 PM, we are adjourned.